States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for the recent tragedy that happened in Texas. Thank you. Would you take the call to order?
Kevin McGovern.
President?
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Cal Ellis.
Here.
Frank Ma.
Here.
Mary Morris.
Here.
Next, we do have public comment.
Yeah, I'll, President has asked me to make an announcement about public comment, just so everybody knows, because the last few meetings, it was getting a little bit out of hand, and the rule on public comment is three minutes per person. And once you do that, you have to understand that public comment is simply that the council generally does not respond unless it's an administrative matter, placing something down later on in the general or commenting like that. But as to your substance, there's generally, you shouldn't expect any response from the council, they're basically prohibited from doing that because of the open meetings laws. There has to be fair notice to people that things are going to be discussed, so that's why. And also, please keep in mind that during the meeting, this is a business meeting, the council, and everybody's welcome, but participation is not allowed unless it's a public hearing, at which point everybody gets to be heard. Other than that, the only way that people can really be heard is if they are acknowledged by a member of the town council, and the council asks you to speak on something. So, please understand that. Unless it's an agenda item where it's opened up to people, it's not basically a free-for-all discussion about general issues at a town council meeting. And that's not to be rude, that's simply because that's the way the state law is on open meetings and the way things have to be run with agendas and the like. Okay?
Do you want to sign up?
Yes, sure. Does anybody else wish to sign up for public comment this time? First, we have ten, Natalie.
All right, who let it out of the bag? Who told everybody that that was my subject for tonight, was the current public comment, and especially these public hearing things? I gotta keep in three minutes, I guess. Well, the first one that got me was at the meeting over at the Metcalf School, when we had this big show going on, and two gentlemen were running back and forth, having a lot of boy bill show. Couldn't say anything better on TV. And there was no attempt to focus them in. They just kept right on going. Other folks sometimes get kind of focused in, which makes you believe there's some kind of something going on here, whether it's the homies with the homies, or family members or something. The last meeting I was at, it was one of the strangest things I've ever seen. Fellow gets up, they're very nice to him, as at the other time, and let this gentleman speak under public comment. That was the assumption of the whole thing, because I didn't see his name anywhere on the whole thing, and it had to do with marijuana. Well, this gentleman went on for fifteen minutes. I said something after the fifteen minutes, and I was basically told to shut up. Well, I guess this gentleman, either he's a, either a homie, or maybe he's related some way to the president, you know, by way of, you know, marriage or something. And he gave us such wonderful information for us people who live out in the woods, you know, and have big gardens and stuff, that it takes seventy-five gallons a day of water to grow four marijuana plants. Now, I don't want you to remember that, because that's a lot of water, so if you decide to grow them, you're gonna need a lot of water. And I don't understand it. Now I see that all of a sudden, the solicitors come up with this whole thing, I still figure somebody let it out of the bag on me, so they would know what was going on, but I don't think it's right. I was gonna bring you a timer, but I've given this council so many timers, it's, I think Calvin, maybe, I have one in this collection, I gave him one time. I went to buy one, but the only ones I could find were ten bucks, and I didn't want to spend that much money. So, really, it's not right. So, right now, we're in a situation where I feel I could stand here, and I could just keep going, and going, and going, and going, and then we see how you feel about me, whether, oh, oh, well, he's, oh, you gotta sit down. But if it's somebody on the other side, you tend to have, let him go, let him go, let him go. Once again, I don't think it's right. I agree with the three minutes, I think the three minutes is fair, and because it was brought out, and at least it looked at it and accepted it, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Hall.
Yes, I wanted to speak to the alternate members that we've been requested to have on the board canvassers. It's in state law, and we haven't ever really done that, but we were reminded from the state that we need to have them. And I just wanted to say that anyone who's going to be an alternate should be computer-savvy, because now most of our work is being done on a computer, so it needs to be someone who's more than just interested in the voter lists and keeping them up to date and things like that, but there's a lot of stuff now that's being done electronically, so it needs to be somebody who can do that. Thank you.
Next, we have William Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Dyke is with me, he represents, in my case, Kings Pond LLC, and in his case, Craig Jarvis at New East Out. And we would like to ask that you take item six, G2, off the consent agenda, so we can address it before the council.
We'll get to that at the consent agenda. You'll see if somebody follows up on that for you. Does anybody else wish to speak for public comment? Next, I don't acknowledge instant announcements, is there anything from the council?
I'd like to recognize a distinguished guest here tonight, Mike Wright, thirty-two years, in at Morrissey. The first one's Mary D. Wall, the board here.
You gonna take that? Mike Wright isn't here. But I would like to speak to the work that I understand was done. I happen to be fortunate enough to live on Route 102, so apparently I was on the first app, or we stood it. But in talking with that DPW director, I understand that his crew was down nonstop until roads were cleared, so that national grid could get in whenever they could, and whatever they did, to serve as all the folks that lived off of the main highways here. I really would like to commend Steve and his crew for their prompt response, and the way in which they moved forward to help make the roads accessible, help national grid to, uh, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda, Reynolds Trust, we did have one. Any reports the council would like to remove? Moving on, so communications, Cal will start with you.
In addition to the eight applications that we see, which we will address, I'm sure as we move on through the agenda, items twenty-five, forty-one, and forty-two, please.
Right?
I have no additional communication from the council.
Other than what Cal had said, the animal shelter study, but we will be addressing other than that, I don't have it. You can put pause this time.
Twenty-four, we're gonna discuss that anyway. Now, in addition, I'll also pull number twenty-eight and number thirty. Anybody wish to pull the meeting, the schedule of November meetings and events? We do need to pull all four of the meetings, as Cal was not here those meetings. Moving into F, digital licenses, can you give us an update on the status of those?
They're all, all seven, if met requirements, except for number two, Wolf Rock, number three, and number seven, Don B. Donas.
So, I'll pull numbers two, number three, and number seven, to discuss later. Under G, I'll pull number two, can you give us an update on numbers one and three?
They're all set.
How about H?
Both have met all requirements.
I?
All six have met all requirements.
J?
All set.
K?
Mobile Village, the only issue there is inspection, the road, but otherwise, all three are all set.
I would ask that they remove from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. L?
All have met all requirements.
I'll remove M in its entirety, and N.
All set, meet all requirements.
Therefore, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
All set.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items F, and, as amended, or pending completion of missing items.
F?
F, which, digital licenses is. There's only one that has missing. F two, F three, and F seven. Oh. We back up, I'll just do the meeting in the first. Motion to approve the minutes, E one, E two, E three, E four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, do my action.
All right, now I'll go on. I, a motion that we approve, F, numbers two, three, and seven, subject to completion of all missing items.
Second motion?
Yep, that was the motion. And then you can communicate with them, let them know if they're still missing those items. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to G two, we have the two applicants here, or the applicant had, we had a objection. Do you guys like to speak briefly on that?
Let me begin by saying that we have spoken, Mr. God and I, and I previously spoke with Mr. Jarvis. I think that this, as I explained to Mr. Jarvis, is a thing which best worked out among the parties. And so, what I would suggest is that if the council is inclined to do so, that you go ahead and approve the license, but on the same condition as the last one, and that is that the operation be within its property.
President, if I could just read to the council what happened back in November of two thousand and fifteen, essentially the same type of issue had just brought up. Mr. Ellis moved that the renewal be granted, and the quote is "for use within the specific bounds of the property" as indicated on the application, so that if there are boundary issues that later prove to exist, that's placed for another form rather than this down council. And so, the application, neither party would be prejudiced from further litigating that issue if necessary. But what they're saying is that they, it looks like they're gonna come to a agreement that will resolve this without further need for that kind of resolution. However, that would be, again, not before this council, it would be post-period court if the issue of the true boundary is something that needs to be addressed.
Let me move for discussion that we approve this license application, subject to the operation being confined to the boundary limits according to the property owned by Mr. Jarvis. I'm not sure that was verbatim, but if that weren't for you...
I'll second the motion.
That was a motion on my part.
Any discussion from the council on the motion?
Yeah, I had a question, a letter from Mr. Murray dated November third, two thousand and seventeen. Did you have a survey done?
Survey is in progress.
I was gonna say, because Pat would be gave, but when we get these in the trade, they're not to be used for survey purposes, so...
They're just for your information.
Yeah. Because there's no legal standing, I know that just from the business side, but the fact is usually just plain on the pages. Okay, that was all I had.
Well, actually, under other discussion, because that very same letter cited a statue about two hundred feet within a boundary, or what from, was that, is that a state statue? Or is that one of our own town lord statues? No, he was only bringing that to our attention. But I questioned, I thought it sounded like town, but then I wasn't sure of the reference, but thank you for that.
Any further discretion? Moving on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Continuing, uh, moving on to K one, Mobile Village, Jake. Cal, you wanna remove that?
I did, and I removed it, because speaking of concern that I have relating to the findings of the building inspector, he indicates a number of deficiencies, and speaks about several abandoned mobile homes that are unsecured, and partially demolished structure. I know there are safety issues, I think, when that kind of a situation occurs. I know we've been through that in another location in town. And he does note that there has been made, some progress has been made. He speaks about four items where the issue has been corrected. So, I'm just concerned that we move ahead with an approval tonight. I would only suggest that we might withhold approval. I'd like to have Jim opine on this. I'm not making it as a form of motion, I'm actually asking at this moment a question if we could delay for a month and indicate that the license needs to be renewed, with confirming some of these, at least the weight violations are correct. Jim, I don't need to put you on the spot.
Yeah, the problem, the only problem that I see is that if this license lapses at the end of this month, correct? So, if you were to do that, the gentleman would have no license for it.
For two days, I believe, until the next council meeting. I mean, I don't know the issue of unlicensed trailer and car, but it just concerns me that we move ahead with these violations so outstanding. And I guess my...
You could continue it until the next...
Well, my question to you is if it goes two days unlicensed...
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that you want to have it heard, you want the parties here, and I can simply with, if, we would be the party that would be enforcing it, I think so, if you're telling me not to enforce for those two days, we won't enforce for two days. So, the fact that there's not a license technically granted for that interim period, so I think you could do, I think you could continue it, it's just that the gentleman's gonna have to understand that he has to come in that day, or that license is basically gone.
And I just want to say also, for the record, that was not a recommendation of the building inspector, but when he provides us with these lists and this list of deficiencies, it just seems to me that we need to try to call on this...
This within the council's discretion, do that.
But if, but that would only be if I made that motion, whether or not the council felt that was appropriate. So, I would make that a motion, that we postpone or continue this license application to the assembly meeting, and request that Mr. Kulcik attempt to make some efforts to away mitigating these issues.
Is there a second from the council?
A second if in discussion.
Go ahead.
The only, I think Councilman Ellis has a valid point. I mean, it certainly seems like the building inspector's letter spells out several deficiencies that I think should be addressed, and granted, this is my first term on the council, but I know from, as being a citizen, I'm living on that side of town, hasn't this been a perennial problem, if this particularly ever?
Every year, every year.
So, I think, I think, so with being a perennial problem every year, I think Councilman Ellis has a good point. I think that maybe we should delay that and have Mr. Kulcik come in front of the council and realize that he needs to address these issues, not only for the benefit of the town, but also for people.
Especially with the electrical issues that are noted in the letter, as well, I mean, that's, I think, also if we pass the license, and then, say, electrical fire starts, if we were notified that that, we'd be at risk.
I agree, Mr. President.
So, the motion is that we continue this to next month?
I got one question from Jim. Seeing that this is an annual issue with this person every year, what you, what kind of action can we take against this person? Yeah, because every year, it's the same thing, over and over and over, he knows better.
Well, we can always institute an action to abate violations of ordinances. Of course, that involves litigation, and there are repercussions, as you know, to the people who live there, obviously, as well, so it's involved, if we're going down that road. Usually, we have been fairly successful in getting laundry lists of things done when an individual has licenses on the line, so that's, that's I can say for you, it would involve litigation.
I think this is a supply of more, because like I said, every year, we're sitting here, continuing with this one half, every single time, because it's some way we can put some...
Yeah, and again, it involves enforcement, it involves particular enforcement officers that find violations, in other words, if it's an electrical violation, we have to follow a certain procedure in the electrical code, the state building code, if it's a...
I mean, if he has an unsafe operation up there, he's responsible for these people off somewhere else, by the way.
That, you know, quite frankly, that's something we don't, that's a civil litigation, a piece of civil litigation between others. We're really only involved with the code enforcement and...
So, how, whether we can send him to the council, or if we sit in time to see if he can be viewed.
We can always send the letter, absolutely, we're up along with that.
Could I speak again to my own motion? I think we all know that Mr. Kulcik had four minutes at my time, and I understand, I think he was to hold himself a year or two or three ago, and I feel badly about that, but, you know, as council says, it seems to be a perennial issue, and I know that we tried, from previous council, tried it with some success to address issues at another park in town, and if we could, even, even when he, if he's addressed, that we indicate that the health department has to be brought in. I mean, I see something here that I don't, wires are tied to live vegetation, I don't know what that means. I don't know, I'm not, it doesn't sound good to me, but it seems like we need to talk about that. So, it's not an idea on this list of... So, that's my motion, and again, it's not because I'm trying to be different about what we have. I also, if I could for the record, indicate that I had a conversation with both the assessor and the collector. I asked the question about whether updated lists of occupants had been submitted, and I'm told by both that the list is not accurate, and they know, they have reasons to know why that's the case without, so I think that what needs to be said is we need an accurate list, and well, who is actually there. So, that's my case, spoken.
Any further discussion? So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? They're sending a letter, I didn't come in.
He does have to come in, yeah.
Next, M, say it in here.
I gotta recuse myself of that one, so...
I removed item number M. Dan has to recuse himself on that about all three. All three are all in otherwise?
Yep.
All right. I'll make a motion...
Except for Richard's inspections, sorry. Except for Richard's inspections.
So, subject to the inspection? So, I'll make a motion that we grant the licenses, subject to the inspection.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Five cases on the agenda. All right, moving on to number seven, vacancies and appointments, personnel, conservation, economic development, still inactive. Number four, board of canvassers, alternate members, two. You guys heard Mary Hall speak this earlier, we need to get a letter, they're asking that we appoint two alternate members, obviously not a winner of each political party, to serve as alternate for the board of elections here in town, or board of canvassers.
I got a question for the board canvassers. Would they have to come in every Tuesday, or just come in for like a training session or something, or?
Well, initially, a training session, just to get an idea, but no, if a member were going to be absent on a Tuesday, the appropriate person would come in.
Kevin, I would move that we write letters to both town committees and ask if they have recommendations, that's been, that's been practiced in the past. But it's, I think it can be posted as well, as well as the letters, just so that we know. I'm not sure if men can be posted. I know that's been past practice. But it might be, and if it were posted, then men would be up to the council to be sure that both, each political party was represented, if you know what I mean, if people come forward. And let's say the town committees don't have someone they like, that they recommend, there might be other people that would just come forward and say, I'd be interested, and then we could determine are they registered, because they more than likely have to be registered as a Republican, one would have to be registered as a Democrat. Am I correct on that, Mary Day?
Or an independent, or a libertarian, it could be either.
Well, can we ask, can we ask Mary Day?
Well, we only have, it could be a moderate, but the only recognized parties are Republican, Democrat, and moderate at this time. And they can't be independent.
Really?
Cal?
You hear that, Kevin?
The motion is anti...
Yeah, it is.
I'd be posted anyway.
It is. Well, because, yeah, we're being transparent.
Is there a second for Cal's motion?
Second.
So, continue the discussion. So, the motion is that we send letters and that we post it.
And may I just speak to that, and are you sure that the letter includes comments to the effect of Mary's plea, and I understand why she made that plea, that we try to engage or employ people that have some computer experience, an expert in something, so that they can operate, find their way through. and expertise in something so that they can operate, find their way through.
Question too. Who are the town committee chairman, chairman, chairperson for Republican? Dianne Allen, still?
Yep.
Thank you.
Bob Johnson.
And Bob Johnson, okay.
Any further discussion from the council regarding the motion? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Motion carries. Resignations. We did get one of the communications from TJ Voudre from the Exeter Rural Land Trust. He did resign from the committee.
And move that position to post it, move that we write to Mr. Voudre, thank you very much.
No second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. Next, appointments. The one animal shelter study committee members, and we're looking for five appointments. As noted earlier, we had eight letters of interest for the study committee. Is there a motion to appoint?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Would you like to make a motion for all five by individually?
We can do it individually or you can go all five over you prefer, sorry.
Okay, well, I have all five.
Okay.
Of my recommendations, anyway. I would move to make a motion to the council to appoint Mrs. Elizabeth Schneider, Mr. Marvin Hughes, Mrs. Kelly Clark, Mr. Tom McMillan, and Mrs. Diane Swindlehurst to be the five members to comprise of the study committee.
Is there a second?
No second to discuss.
Would you like to explain or?
Certainly. I base my recommendations on three of the five. I've already had past experience sitting on a study committee in town. And I think they've already shown their, their level of competence to sit on a study committee and produce results to the benefit of the town. The two remaining members, one of the members, Mr. McMillan, has also served in the town for quite some time. And the last person I recommended, Mrs. Swindlehurst. I found by the contents of her letter that she seems to have a good background, seems to have some abilities to be objective, as she put it in her letter. And also said that despite the fact that her husband can't help her directly with the position, he has a background in engineering, so I think she'd be well run the candidates, the fifth candidate to serve.
Would you accept an amendment to your motion?
Certainly.
I would like to see Sharon Hegberg instead on the committee. Would you be willing to replace her with Elizabeth Schneider?
Uh, no, I would not.
Is there a candidate you would be willing to replace her with?
Well, the only, the only candidate that I recommended out of the five that I don't know specifically is the last one, Mrs. Swindlehurst. But like I said, her letter I thought was very impressive, with a pastor, her interest in her background. The only concern that I have about the three out of the eight that submitted letters was do they currently have any affiliation with the friends in the animal shelter as far as being a volunteer? Which at one point, I think is a benefit, but at the other point, I think it would prove the town and the council to probably have five people who aren't directly related to the animal shelter that way to avoid any ethical conflict. So I don't happen to know whether or not Mrs. Hegberg, Mrs. Bowers, or Miss Swindlehurst has any connection. I didn't see in any of their letters of interest that they did, but that doesn't mean they do not. But I'm certainly open to any other further amendments or discussion. I know, I know the letters were pulled by several individuals on the council, so.
I know Sharon personally, that's why I can speak to her character.
Okay.
That's why I was recommending her for the committee, so.
Okay. Well, I think, I think Mrs. Schneider is an excellent, is an excellent choice myself. She happens to be one of the three that has already served the town in a, in a matter on the study committee. So I think that she's well versed, asks difficult questions when necessary, and I think she would make a good addition to that committee. So I can't, if you would like to suggest that somebody else be substituted instead, I'm open to that, of course.
I'd like to ask if your recommendation would be be well, but if that might apply.
It's a pleasure to the council.
May I speak to the motion, Jim?
Sure.
I was going to support Sharon Hegberg, because I've known her for a very long time. And she's not a personal friend, but I've had many conversations with her about the shelter and about the work that she's done and her husband has done in the volunteer. And I really think that having someone sit with others, like those that you suggest, that's been there regularly and can speak to some operational issues is very beneficial. So I didn't know that Council President was going to speak to her, but I would certainly support her to be a member of the committee.
You could put a letter into the land trust.
Well, no, I'm not talking about just serving. I'm talking about her interest in the, in the shelter, because she spent so much time there and volunteering that I think she knows, and she may know issues that maybe that could be resolved. Because I think that's also, I think that's important, that somebody that's there that sees there could be something done differently, and I think she might be wanting to speak to that. So I would, I would really support her as a member of the committee. And I guess I'll throw out another suggestion. Would you consider her in place of Mr. Hughes?
Would you consider her in place of this Swindlehurst person?
Well, like I said before, and I'll reiterate again, Miss Swindlehurst is really the only member of the five that I suggested that we appoint. And I don't know her background only based on her letter. I think Mr. Hughes, and to be, you know, to be perfectly frank, excuse the pun. I think Mrs. Schneider, Mrs. Clark, and Mr. Hughes have already been an asset to the town. So I think to have them sit on the study committee again, I think would be an asset. If somebody would like to suggest that they replace, that. It's Miss Hegberg, correct?
Yeah.
Right. If somebody wants to suggest that Miss Hegberg either replace Mr. McMillan or Mrs. Swindlehurst, I'd be certainly, be willing to along with that.
Interesting, because I, for one, wanted to thank Mr. McMillan, because he stepped forward a number of times. And he also just recently chaired the TRA to Review, didn't chair, but served on the TRA to Review.
I agree, that's why he was my, yeah, I agree.
It's a valuable position.
I agree. That's why he was one of my initial choices, right.
I also like to, I also like to encourage people who come forward and haven't sat before.
Well, in reference to your comment about her experience at the shelter as a volunteer, I think that is, I think that has a lot to do with it, but that's one of the reasons why we're going to have the ACO as an advisory role in that committee. So I would think specific questions we would have, we could direct to her. Now, the volunteer, Miss Hegberg would have a different perspective. Certainly, maybe a different opinion, and certainly amend that. Would you like me to reword my motion, Mr. President? Or would you like me to borrow and have somebody else make a motion?
No, it's still, so I'll ask the second amendment for Swindle, for placing Swindlehurst for Hegberg. Just I always think you have an employee versus manager, even though she's not an employee, you need to get two different perspectives.
I understand.
So that's my amendment. Except for?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, you're not on the zoning review board?
I am.
You are. So is that because he's a town, bow with the town? Can you be on, be a voting member on that committee?
Can you serve on two separate committees within the town?
I know we're on as advisors.
This is an advisory committee, correct?
Yeah, right. They may make my, my understanding is, and again, I wasn't here when this, when this motion was made to set up the committee, but I assume it's in an advisory capacity, just as the transfer station committee was. So that in terms of deciding what the final recommendations might be, it's anyone I should think would be able to. I think, from a zoning perspective, I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Would you consider maybe taking all the people that came, sent letters? I know it's not a huge committee. I mean, we were, our committee from the.
And you get too many people on that, somebody cooks.
And we didn't, I think when we set it up, we specifically limited, yeah, at that time.
Specifically made it to three advisory positions of liaison from the council and five members of the committee.
I think it would be pertinent to invite the other three, the three members that don't get on to attend the meetings.
The public meetings, so.
Right.
Okay.
I agree.
So what was the motion again?
I had originally made a motion to appoint Mrs. Schneider, Mrs. Clark, Mr. Hughes, Mr. McMillan, and Miss Swindlehurst. And the president amended my motion to substitute Miss Swindlehurst for Miss Hegberg.
Any further discussion? Karen, none? Motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
No.
Motion does carry. And then, Joe, so then would you be willing to, I'll make a motion that we send letters to the three candidates that do not get on and invite them to attend the meetings as members of the public. There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to eight public hearings. Any liquor licenses, class A, there's any kind of a.
Exeter wine and spirits, it's not metal requirements. We just filed this application on Friday. Ophirac wine and spirits is all set. Speed Pro, Yagoo, and Extra Country Club are all set. Hornet's Sound, just waiting for the divisional taxation clearance, which isn't coming. The divisional taxation taxes are a little over, so we're pretty on top of that. Olmstead and Silicio Cafe are all set. Effie's Twisted Pizza, tax clearance again. Town Pizza all set, diner all set, Sophie's Grill House, tax clearance. Little Country Pizza, tax clearance.
Just a point of information, and Jim, perhaps for you. I was just going to ask, do we only sit as a board if it's a new application? Or do we open, it's called a public hearing. Do we open as a board?
Actually, good point. Yeah, I think you should open as a Board of Liquor Licenses at this point.
I'll make a motion that we open as the Exeter Liquor Licensing Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I guess you have a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing regarding liquor license renewals for the period of 12/1, 1/17 through 11/30, 2018. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have all the first from Lynn. Is there any question from the council regarding the licenses?
So I appreciate Lynn's update and all the due diligence that you and your office does regarding these licenses. And I would only like to say that I thought about opening, I thought as a public hearing, because I can remember many years ago, at least one institution and one, one business that caused tremendous concern. And so I think the question we need to ask is there, since a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak to any one of these applications? Good, see, you see, because it proves my point, things are being well run, people are doing a good job of that.
No, we could, we could, well, we could close the public hearing and then we close as a board.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing for the liquor license renewals.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll make a motion that we approve under A, number B, under number two, number A, B, C, E, F, H, I, as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Then I'll make a motion that we approve numbers 1A, 2D, 2G, 2J, and 3A, subject to receipt of all missing items.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
I'd make.
Yeah, and then I'll also make a motion that we reaffirm the cap at 13 with two Class A licenses, 10 Class BV licenses, and one Class B limited license.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? And I'll make a motion that we close as the Exeter Liquor Licensing Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Public Entertainment License for Linn and Fall. Applicant, President of the Boulder Dash LLC, 53 Beacon Drive, about Kingstown Island, Boulder Dash Trail Run Obstacle Course, Sunday, March 18th, 2018, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Camp Condes, 54 Exeter Road in Exeter. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's the applicant here, a senior.
They're all right, yeah. So this is, I think, the second or third time that we've been over Canonicists. A little bit different than we've done in the past over at Yagoo, where everything is parking, everything is all included on the property. Any questions for me as to the specifics or?
You just did one, what, two months ago?
We did one in August.
August, okay.
Yeah, it, different, though. It's a color room, which we're actually going to be applying to do again in May. You'll see my face again in a couple of months. But this is a little bit different. This is in the wintertime. It's out on the trails. Other than that, yeah, pretty much what we do every time. Much smaller, though, on a, much smaller scale than what we've done.
It got smaller than when you did it at Yagoo.
Yeah.
You don't attract as many participants, or it's the nature of the time of year?
It's winter, yeah, yeah. So it's just a much smaller event. Our larger event last year, this year, was at Rocky Point.
Well, may I just say that I'm impressed that you're here in November, asking for a license for March. I mean, we're not used, we're not used to that. So in fact, we're more used to calling a special meeting because someone comes to the clerk and says, I need it to, whatever. So thank you for.
So will you see me again in December from May?
Oh, good, that's fine. Come right in, come right in.
So what do you plan on doing, like two a year there or?
Right now, that's, that, it seems to be working, so, yeah, it's, it's just a beautiful spot and they're great to work with.
Any public comments? Here we go. I'll make a motion that we close the Public Entertainment. Is there a motion to grant?
Move to grant the application.
Oh, is there, oh, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there a motion?
Move, move to grant the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
The one?
All set?
Just wishes.
Moving on. The benign personnel issues, labor negotiations. Are there any from the council? I do have an update for you guys that I can give you in any executive session regarding personnel labor issues. Line B, holiday tree lighting ceremony. Do you have a date on that?
Yes, we usually do it the first Thursday of December, but since Christmas and Thanksgiving. But since Christmas and Thanksgiving, we're supposed this year, um, we thought we might do it November thirtieth. So the tree's up for three weeks and rather than two. We'll put it up for three, huh?
November thirtieth?
Yes. The Thursday.
If you had to be in that, 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 that reading. Tree to tree.
Not yet.
There is, yeah, the last Thursday, the whole.
Right, let's see, it's three weeks, if we wait the following two weeks.
Yeah, we do, yeah, if we wait till there. Christmas falls on that, find out. There's Thanksgiving. Fourth.
I'll offer to whatever I can cancel, I don't, I know that dates in my head for some reason.
I'm just wondering if we should consult the director, whether we guys go in the tree and have the time to get decorated and stuff. No, the thirtieth's fine, okay.
Like, when I assume you discussed, there's some, you know, staff and, and Steve, so.
The amount of work it takes to get something up and decorate it. People are flying. And it looks nice.
We also notify Santa.
Send a letter that we want.
It's kinda warm, so it might still be sunbathing.
Yeah, male.
Maybe you'll come and bring you the shirts.
Yeah, you will, yeah.
All right, so November thirtieth is.
I'll move to approve the date of the holiday tree light ceremony.
I'll second that.
November thirtieth.
November thirtieth at seven o'clock.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries? Next, uh, approve of the employee appreciation luncheon.
Uh, we can have December nineteenth. And, um, last year, if you, you post for the hour for the luncheon.
So Tuesday before Christmas?
It is, that would be after the tax quarter.
Yeah, move to establish December nineteenth as a date for the employee appreciation luncheon.
Close for the hour.
And, and the, uh, and the town hall office can close for one hour. Between twelve and one.
Yeah, the other departments can, can also close also to attend.
I'll second the motion.
Nineteen December?
Nineteen December. Any further discussion? If there's, this is an annual, I'd just like to add that it is an annual dinner we do for the employees here in appreciation, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, presentation exceptions of the audit report for fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. All right, Maria. Thirty seconds.
They're okay. I'd like to welcome Mike and Cece from Nader Wadovic, and they've been doing the field work since August. And so they have all the numbers, so the town has had another favorable year. And we received the audit and we emailed it to you on Friday, and I would defer over to Mike.
Uh, Maria's introduced, I'm Mike, I'm the senior on the job, and this is the city issue staff. Um, unfortunately, the engagement partner, Jeff Wadovic, uh, had an emergency and was not able to attend tonight. Um, so I'm gonna present you guys the draft financials for June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Where we'll start is on page one. Uh, this is the independent auditor's report, this is our report on the town's financials for the year. The paragraph that I'd like to draw the council's attention to is on page two, at the top, the opinion. Um, what this paragraph states is that the town received a unmodified or clean opinion, meaning that there was no issues within the town's financial, um, numbers. Uh, the next page I'd like to draw the council's attention to is page thirteen. Um, some of the pages in between that we're gonna skip are, um, more, uh, reporting requirements for gas bill and stuff, which the town, it's more numbers on the accrual basis versus the cash basis. With modified cash, which is what the council bases all their decisions on. Um, I'm gonna focus primarily on the general fund on page thirteen. Uh, the landfill disclosure fund is a special revenue fund the town has. Um, it's considered major under the standards, which is why it's presented separately. Uh, the column all the way to the right, the non-major other governmental funds. They're actually broken out on pages forty-six through fifty-three. Uh, those are your special revenues, your capital projects, your, uh, permanent funds, all the other stuff. I don't get into that as much because the town focuses primarily budget on the general fund and that's the biggest fund. In the general fund, the town had cash of roughly three point one million dollars at the end of the year. Uh, they had property tax receivables of about four hundred and seven thousand. Uh, there is some intercompany funds due to the general fund in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. There's a small tax title property of about fifteen thousand. We come down into the liability section. Uh, the town owes payables and accrued items, primarily accrued payroll, of about a hundred and fifty thousand. Again, there's some other, um, intercompany funds payable due to other funds of one point one million. Uh, there is a due to an agency fund, which is your charity bond of a hundred and five thousand. There's other liabilities of fifteen. The town has deferred property taxes of about three hundred and eighteen thousand. As we come down into the fund balance, the town has assigned five hundred and seventy-five thousand. It has unassigned about one point four million. Now, the unassigned number, we like to see between ten to fifteen percent of your current year tax collections. Uh, this year, it came in about nine point eight, so it's slightly below the number we like to see as the unassigned balance. Um, but it's roughly, roughly there, I mean, it's on the lower end. Uh, so the town is in good financial position. As we turn the page to page fifteen. Um, this is the profit and loss for the town. Again, I'm gonna focus primarily on the general fund. Um, the town collected about fourteen million dollars from its property taxes, which represents ninety-five percent of the town's total revenues. Um, it had four hundred and thirteen thousand from intergovernmental revenues, which represent the, uh, motor vehicle taxes. Um, the meals tax, all those other items from the state. Um, departmental revenues were roughly one hundred and sixty-two thousand. Um, license and permits came in at sixty-two thousand. Um, the fines, penalties and interest was actually favorable this year, uh, which largely favorable this year, excuse me. At, um, nine hundred and seventy thousand, which was due to collections of prior year taxes. Um, as we come into the expenses, uh, the general government had roughly one point six million of expenses. Public Works was a hundred, uh, seven hundred and one thousand. Uh, the biggest number clearly is the education at eleven point five million, which represents roughly eighty-two percent of the town's total expenses. Um, there's some debt that the town paid of roughly two hundred and twenty-six thousand. I'll now turn your attention to page thirty-nine, which gets, um, more into the budget to actual. Uh, this is more of a summary page, the council's really gonna wanna turn their attention to pages forty-one through. Forty-five, which we'll turn to after, it breaks down the budget to actual based on the actual categories that the town does their budget on. Um, going through this briefly, I mean, property taxes were favorable by about eighteen thousand. Um, intergovernmental revenues were favorable by about sixteen thousand. As I had stated earlier, the fines and interest on late penalties was favorable by about thirty-two thousand. And the big number on the expenses is the general government expenses were under budget by a hundred and forty-three thousand. So as we turn. Page. To forty-one. This is just the revenue section for the budget to actual. We just kinda went over, I mean, this is more, like I said, the breakdown for the council to look at to see exactly the line items that they broke all their, um, budget down into. It gives the individual. And if we turn the page, we go to the expenses. Which I'll just touch on a couple of the highlights. Um, total salaries and wages were under budget by about fifty thousand. That's due to a couple of positions not being filled, as well as, um, there being some promotions and part-time hires, which ended up causing the budget to be down. Um, there's also favorable, like we said, general fund, um, expenditures, I mean, there's some that were unfavorable, like legal fees, that was due to it being a union contract year. Um, there's, you know, the town, uh, retirement expense you're gonna see is about twenty-seven thousand. Over budget, which is due to a timing difference, um, between what is accrued at the end of the year versus what's budgeted. So when the budget, um, prepared, it's based on the retirement expenses from the previous year, not what's actually accrued and paid at the end of the year. So that's why there's a discrepancy there. Um, you know, the contingency fund, uh, wasn't used this year, although it's good to have the contingency fund just in case some expenses do occur. It was a favorable balance this year. Um, the only other number I'll attest to on the next page is the highway workers overtime was down due to a mild winter, which is just caused by less, meaning less, um, time to do filing. And that ended up leading to the town actually having a profitable year of about ninety-five thousand dollars. I will now turn the council's attention to page fifty-five. Everything in between there was just the notes, I normally don't go over those, they just explain everything that's on the balance sheet and the profit and loss that we just went over. Um, this page is the schedule of property tax receivables. It kinda breaks down what the town collected throughout the year, where its assessment was at, um, any refunds and abatements they gave. So throughout the year, the town collected roughly fourteen million, um, from tax collections. And there is some additives, there's a sixty day add-in and, um, a reversal, but, so roughly the property tax collections, as we stated earlier, was the fourteen million, uh, sixty-five thousand. There is a new requirement over here, you'll see the table's a little larger this year, the, the, um, state actually wants it broken down, that you see the cash collections by period. You'll see you have your, your July through August of sixteen. Um, your September through June of seventeen, and then the total. Um, that's just a new requirement by the state. It does not affect the numbers in any way, shape or form, it's just a reporting requirement. If we turn the page. Um, this is the schedule of long-term liabilities, this is all the debt the town has. Um, it illustrates what was outstanding at the beginning of the year, that's the fifth column from the left. Um, it shows anything that was added during the year, the retirements and the outstanding balance. Um, and any interest paid. It also illustrates in the very last column, the amounts that will be due, principal payment amounts due for the following fiscal year. And in the preceding pages are all of, um, there's some additional reports. I will mention that there is a new report, um, which is the annual supplemental transparency information, which is the MTP two report, which the state is required. Um, this does not have any impact on your financial statements, it's a presentation issue that the state wanted, as to how they want to see things reported throughout the town. And that is on pages fifty-nine through. Uh, sixty-three of the schedules, and then there's some notes to it on sixty-four. And I went through that a little fast, but it is boring, does anyone have questions?
No, it really isn't, it really isn't boring because, you know, as we're sitting through building a budget. Always anxious to know about the guidance we're provided, the decisions we make, and, and what appeared to me that. In most every case, uh, at least, this was a sound budget for the past year, would you agree, Maria?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, the ending unfavorable note is always.
So we try to them ending up in the red.
I believe so, I mean, we're adding to the fund balance, but we also have the luxury of, when we build a budget, to be able to, that hundred and fifty thousand is, you know, we can say, well.
I spoke to her about this earlier today, because I mean, we'll still be able to move some money into.
Well, and we did, and so we did.
Yes. And I know you guys normally reappropriate an amount at the end of the year for the budget, and I'm gonna say in the five years I've done this, I don't believe you've ever used, had to draw upon it. To add income to the town, which is good. Um, another thing I wanted to mention was, you know, working with Maria is great, she's very good at what she does. Um, I can tell you that her ending number at the end, end of the year was not very different than what was in the financials, so she was, the adjustments I give her are the same, two or three every year. And she's very spot on with what she does. So I can tell you that the board is, the council is getting very accurate monthly information from her.
Yes, and I can speak to, having sat here for a number of years when, when we were begging for extensions because the audit was not ready. Not because of the firm, I wasn't sure, it's because of trying to pull together the information. So we're very fortunate to have a situation here that is much better than years ago, thank you, Maria, for what you do.
So I think the goal is, as it is every year, we're gonna try to get it by the fifteenth of December to the state. Um, so definitely there's time for all of you to review it, to ask questions, to, um. I mean, the numbers are the numbers, I don't think we can change them, but, you know, if there's any. Unless you have a question now.
I mean, you guys can make a motion to accept it barring that there is no changes in the next couple of weeks that you guys have an opportunity to go through with.
I don't have a problem doing that, I don't know if the county, if there's a legal counsel having advice for us.
That's fine.
Yeah, I, I, it seems very thorough, I should make.
Like Maria said, I mean, the deadline is December thirty-first, we normally don't file till the first or second week of December, just to give that grace period in case there is anything, but.
I, I have no problem moving to accept the, uh, the, uh. The budget. The.
Right.
Audit, thank you. A, not a B word, A word, an audit as presented this evening.
Is there a second? I'll second for discussion.
So I think the mild winter definitely helps. I think a couple of years ago, we did have a deficit and it was the really bad winter. Um, it impacts all the town, to all the, all the departments, the resources, fuel. So that, just hope for a good winter this year.
Cal, I could just amend your motion to say, uh, using the language presented, pending no drastic changes, any material items?
Sure, that's fine.
Any further discussion from the council? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you for your service. Maria, thank you, Maria.
Moving on to number E, communication number twenty-eight, installation of streetlights at six nine nine South County Trail. Yes, it's communication number twenty-eight. Would you like to bring us up to speed a little about this?
So Sophie's Blue House, um, there's no streetlight there on the road, and there's issues getting in and out of the parking lot. She's spoken to her neighbors, who would also, of the neighborhood businesses, who would also like to see the streetlight, um, her, you know, in, 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 accessing the house in Durban. In the morning, in at night. And we have to, um, I guess, request it through national, right? Send a letter.
And how much do we get to pay?
That was my next question, what would be the cost to the town?
My store, I've even got a ditch wish and ran a ton of it out to the edge of the road.
My other thought is that.
It's a state highway too, I think it's different that way.
The grid no longer will put up individual streetlights for residents, they've abandoned that, that project. Businesses could be different, I'm speaking for residential ones, so like, ones around town that have.
I know on a state highway, is the town liable to pay?
If, if the, a business or resident requests the light, they would pay for it, but they, they. But they, they abandoned putting them up for residents, individual ones. Now, businesses, that could be a different story. But the business would be the one paying, if it was requested by the business.
I'd like to take this opportunity to explain that what Steve says is absolutely right, because many people have asked, how did you get that light? Well, years ago, they allowed individuals to have a light, which I have paid for ever since I've been married. And this is the result of bringing the city get-out to the country. But others, as Steve said, I know others have required, and personal residences are not allowed to do that. But as you said, perhaps businesses can request it.
So the DOT said the city or town will contact National Grid, and then National Grid will charge the Sophie's? Not the town?
The town, well, it would have to be the business that would pay for the light.
I think we should get clarifications. I don't want to accrue something that will cost.
Yeah, because talking to, talking to National Grid now, you're calling North Borough, Mass., it's gonna take you two months to get an answer.
No, we have a direct line now through our community liaisons, so we can get an answer fairly quickly.
I'd get more information before we commit to anything.
So make a motion that we hold off on this until we have further information regarding who would be paying the cost.
Didn't we get, I'm sorry, I'll second for this topic.
Thank you.
Didn't we get a clarification on that? I get an email about that?
It was about the cost, not who's gonna pay. There was no discussion about who would pay.
National Grid said we have to be the ones to request it, or on behalf of the business, but there was no discussion of who should be liable for paying the cost.
But, okay, I mean, I...
You know what happens when you put one streetlight up.
Well, yeah, that's a concern about setting a precedent. But if we, if we were to move forward with the understanding that it would only be requested providing the party requesting, they pay for the light. Otherwise, we're gonna have others come in and ask for that same service. So I, I certainly don't have a problem moving it forward with the understanding that the town is not responsible for paying.
Or maintenance.
Or any of that.
Yeah, I think we should be more aware at this point.
Get a little more information on that.
All who's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. F, the October communication number thirty-seven, the two thousand fifteen Hopkinton Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was moved to this month's meeting, see if we had any comments that we wish to send to Hopkinton regarding their hazard mitigation plan. Did anybody have any comments they wished to forward?
I have no comments.
Oh, no, I, I have to be honest. The thick pack of hazard mitigation, I did not spend a lot of time with. But I know Steve, Steve wanted to make a comment. Can we ask Steve to talk about it? Unless, can we answer the question?
I agree with you. Steve, myself, and Stefan.
Right, right.
In my capacity, I didn't see any comments.
All right, what I noticed on it for impact to Exeter residents would be primarily on Woody Hill Road. If and when they budgeted money to replace the dual wooden bridge structure, there would have to be a detour, but it wouldn't really impact traffic. The only impact is on that long-range plan of five years. There's the culvert that needs to be widened to two lanes on Woody Hill. And that would result in either a detour affecting Exeter residents because they would have to close that section of the road for that project. That would be the, basically, the only impact that plan has on Exeter residents on a highway point of view.
Do we want to send those comments along to Richmond, or will the council wish to?
I'm assuming the same mitigation plan, the copy of it was sent to Richmond as well, right?
I would assume so.
Right. Well, I think that's invalid if what the director has, maybe we should just, just to get on, just to get on the record, that we, that that was his comment, that we should send a recording.
I'll second that for discussion. Will you be able to speak with Steve and get the exact wording of the issues?
At least we're on record, anyway, that that's the opinion of him. Did you have any feedback from Stefan to the fire in regards to the document?
No, I don't think he had much comment.
I think it was, I think I briefly spoke to him, but it was several weeks ago. And I think he said it was similar to what Ken said, that a lot of it was ordered.
Was Hopkinton asked that, or asking that we validate, prove, support? I forgot who the position was, or was it only, I know, I'm sorry, was it only a notice? Or to provide comments? Okay, well, it seems like that would be the one that we'd support.
We'll do the same thing to them. Could end tomorrow.
Happy hearing Stefan, Hall.
On this?
No, like I said, I think, I, I spoke to him briefly about it after the last council meeting, when this was discussed and moved to this agenda. And he said that he had briefly looked for it, and I think he had the same comments as Ken. It was relatively a standard document. There wasn't anything out of it.
Steve will pick up on that.
Right.
Well, that's the only individual road with the town of Exeter and Hopkinton that has a, that's on their list of projects.
Right.
And their five-year plan. Currently. So all the other roads are either through the state forest, or there's no impacts.
Any further discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The carriers? All right, next, we have the intermunicipal services sharing agreement of Kingstown. Frank, can I ask to be added to the agenda?
I, I did. Before we approach that, could I ask the council for a brief recess, please?
Of course. Make sure we have a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
For some reason. We stopped it, we stopped it that night. I got out of work. We got knocked out. Same day. So it was like, we didn't, we didn't... I knew you were open. I had, I said it. I know that one.
Oh, okay.
I know when you drive up, they go, this pass seven, you know, it's fine. And it's good on the road. For real. It looks like a lot, but it's, I was questioned by saying, because I know sometimes we put in our snowshoes pretty difficult. So we still sit up, but, oh, man. And then it came back on. I don't know why it was down. It wasn't, never, but I did have a problem with it. Tree films. Lost my driveway and landed in a car. For a day or so, I didn't stay around. I went in, drove under the, I couldn't get a car. I called him and, you know, yeah, we're not here. I passed a crew right here on Little Street, and he said, oh, okay, we'll come get him. And I saw him later in the day, and he said, yeah, we got that. Got home, and there it was, still. They finally came this afternoon. And the guy didn't have a saw in him. He thought it was a down line. That was the only... I saw her, she called him. She said, sister, after all these questions, and he said, okay, we blocked your report by, and they hung up. So, you don't understand, look at this. I don't blame you for the problem. That was a much heavier storm. We're always friends. It's only snow. It'll, it'll melt like July. And now she's stressed by all of them. I don't, I don't stress. Yes, I don't stress. Every time I come with a stack of bills. But I just want to give her, you're very, very servicey. He wants it to be on my son's head. Well, I came from the state, and I had a better place. It was greater than I wanted. Road or trees or holes. You can find that. It's right off the pavement. Do you know my son and my son come back from the same jail? We were coming out of the river. So right now, I got tired. Yeah, everybody has, you have to. Item G, that's hoisted.
No, 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 no.
I'll make a motion that we read adjourn the council meetings. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We read adjourned. Frank?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the council, for your indulgence. I had asked the president to put item G on the agenda based on some concerns that have come to my attention. That, this actually came about a couple of council meetings ago, where I happened to bring, just to give you a little background, I brought my tablet to the meeting and asked Lynn for the web key to the Wi-Fi so I could access some information on my tablet while I was going through the, the, through the council meeting. And it came to my surprise that even though the town hall does have internet access, it does not have Wi-Fi access. There's only one particular department that has access to Wi-Fi, which is the building inspectors, which meet on Wednesday. So upon further questions of Ken and Lynn, I found out that this isn't the only issue with regards to the intermunicipal sharing agreement we have with North Kingstown, who is supposed to provide us with hardware, software, and services with regards to what goes on at the town hall. So my understanding is that this has been a perennial issue for several years. I know that President McGovern sent a letter in May to try and address this issue. And the town clerk has always, has also had repeated phone calls with not a lot of results with regards to getting answers to specific questions, whether it be the router that you would like to have put in so that way the employees in the town hall would have access to Wi-Fi, which I think is important. But also, questions after speaking to the treasurer with regards to financials between the town and the IT department in North Kingstown, which we have the sharing agreement with, with regards to what we have as an understanding as far as specifics, not only involving how much we pay them, even though it's a line item in the budget of how much we give them, but this, I have a copy of the contract here, which I can obviously get to everybody. The contract is somewhat vague. There's no, there's no specifics that are within the contract with regards to numbers. It was always more or less a gentleman's agreement in the past with regards to, it's gonna be a line item in the budget, and they're gonna take care of certain things with regards to hardware and upgrades, and so on and so forth. So the last communication that the town has actually had, because of the due diligence of the treasurer, actually goes back three years, to two thousand fourteen. So I found that rather disturbing. And I also found that there was communications that went back to when Joe Gillis was still a member of our staff as well. And the specifics go into, you know, exactly what the accounting was as of a specific date. And there was a point in time when the treasurer finally made a decision, along with the, from the consent of the council and, and, and the town clerk, that we were going to essentially give them a certain amount, divided by two, in two payments a year. So the problem with that, that I see, is, is, has many levels. First of all, in my opinion, I'm not exactly sure that, despite the fact that they say that they're short-staffed in their department, the communication has not been good between our town and their town with regards to the agreement in behalf of them. I also took it upon myself, after having a discussion with the town council assistant and the town clerk, contacting them myself. And I called them on four different occasions, never received a call back. I also contacted a member of the North Kingstown Town Council to see if they could address it as well. And that individual approached the person in IT in North Kingstown, and they pledged that they would get in touch back with me or the town clerk or the treasurer with regards to her questions. As of today, we still have not received any communication from them. So I felt that it was, we reached a point in time, because this is not a new issue, and it's been perennial over the years. And to the defense of the treasurer and the town clerk, who has not really pressed the issue because they've had, if you, to take it out of context, what they've said is, we don't want to go from bad to worse, not only on service, but also on what the level of expensive could be to the town if we change our vendor. So I said, well, why don't we check out a couple of surrounding towns and find out if they're paying with regards to services? So I have found that in communications with the town of West Greenwich, they have a situation which is now similar to ours, thanks to the forward thinking of Maria, that we're only, they're only paying for services as we are. However, West Greenwich is receiving services from their vendor. We're paying for them and not really receiving what we should be receiving, in my opinion.
Are they receiving services from another municipality?
Yes, from another vendor, that's correct.
Cool, from a vendor or municipality?
Pardon?
They're receiving it from a vendor, not from a municipality?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Right. So... I understand the concern with regards to the town clerk and the town treasurer to... You know, do we want to be in a position where we want to put out another RFP and put this out to bid? But I think pushes come to shove at this point, if you'll excuse the cliche. If we're not receiving services that we pay for...
When they're in bridge of budget.
Right. Exactly. So, I want to bring this up. I want to also ask the solicitor on his opinion. And before we consider whether or not we... I mean, this language right within the sharing agreement, under the terms, that says that, I mean, I'll read the term. This agreement shall commence on the date signing and continue until June 30th, which essentially is renewed every two years. The terms of this agreement may, at the request of either party, be reviewed for modification every fifth year or date of execution. Either party may terminate this agreement or any extension thereof without penalty by providing written notice sixty days in advance of the intended termination date to the town council of the party hit to. So, this language right within the contract that we have that, if need aside, is happy. And despite the efforts that we've made to communicate with them, not only are they not providing it with us to serve, probably the worst part is they don't communicate with us. If they would just at least communicate with us, return a phone call to either myself or the clerk or the treasurer, we'd know where we're at. So, we've got a situation where we don't know where the balance is with regards to hardware that they've pledged to upkeep and replace. And the initial issue of the Wi-Fi, I think, is very important to all of the departments in the town hall, as well as the council, if they want to access that at any one particular time. So, I'd like to get the solicitor's opinion on this and then whether or not the council would consider possibly going out to RFP again and putting this out to bid. And then if we get a good response to that, maybe we could consider terminating the agreement that we have.
Be happy to take a look at it, Frank. Not really, don't think I can give you an opinion tonight.
Right, I understand. That's why I wanted to bring up the discussion. I understand this is not something that's going to give us off tonight.
Can I just speak to this because? Because I know exactly about what you speak. And it has been an ongoing issue. And when I saw this on the agenda, talking with Lynn, she explained that you had a concern, which I absolutely support and understand. And in my opinion, we should move to an RFP as quickly as we can to be written up to seek a vendor with some kind of conditions that I was even saying today, that will allow for, say, three service calls a month. And anything above that would have to be an additional... I'm just throwing that out there because I have no idea how often they might need to come.
Right.
But something in an RFP. And as far as notifying them, I'd say we move ahead, try another alternative, get another alternative in place and say, thank you, but it just isn't working anymore. And if the town of North Kingstown wanted to take us to task about breaking the contract, let them try. I can't imagine that they would give them the experience. And you just spoke of it. You made four calls. Lynn told me you tried four times and nobody's returned a call. You're a member of the council.
Was it two years you had to go down there?
No, I...
No, she actually drove to their office to get some...
See, from the outset, and here's what happened. The gentleman that helped guide us through this lived in Exeter at the time, was their IT director. And said, I know we can make this work. And I made him promise, right here in this room, you have to come to financial town meetings and vote yes on this thing because we need to make it work because the existing situation was not working. So, yes, let's move forward. And I'm glad you brought it up. So...
The only other comment that I have is taking the recommendation of the town clerk and the town council assistant was, even though we're going to go out to RFP or if the council decides to do that, I think it's also to the benefit of the town hall and the council to make sure that if we put it out to RFP and somebody bids, to make sure that they come in and find out exactly what we need in regards to, you know, make...
Would it be pertinent to have someone in IT compared to how write the RFP?
That was another one that we talked about.
Right.
Have somebody that, we don't have the expertise, somebody to come in and assess our situation here.
That's good.
And write the RFP of what needs to be done on a maintenance schedule, on an annual basis, or whatever.
Right.
And that would be a lot cheaper than just going right out to RFP.
Right.
If we write incorrectly, then they could give us, they could match it up to what we wrote, but it's not what we wanted.
Exactly.
Then I think that's the first step we ought to take is to have somebody come in and give an assessment.
A third party that doesn't know anything about the situation.
How would we know about such a thing? I mean, would you make...
There is a member of the EWG Building Committee, who is the IT director for ABC Six. He's also a resident of Exeter. He might be willing to do it on a pro bono basis, just to evaluate. We could reach out to him and find out.
Okay. Do you want that in the form of a motion? Or would you like the town clerk to, or the contractor?
I think we should do a motion.
Let's.
Oh, sure. Did any individuals change their name? So, I'll make a motion that Lynn reach out to Mr. Angie regarding helping draft an RFP for the town hall's electrical service needs.
IT needs.
IT service needs.
I'll second that.
Yeah, well, and under discussion, I mean, he might do this pro bono, but we should be prepared to compensate him in some way.
I agree.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know quite how you approach it. I don't think Lynn calls and says, well, would you do it for free? But if you don't want to, give us a bill.
Right.
I mean, I think that we should suggest he charge the town what he feels is an appropriate amount. I mean, we've got that contingency fund. And let's take care of this. These people are needing this.
Well, they get the assessment off Mike, but I think there's companies out there that would be more capable, coming in and waiting. Doing assessments. Been doing assessments and waiting. He's run a balance here. It's time, you know, maybe a consultant or just to help out.
Well, Lynn could ask if he would do that, if he, well, you don't think that's a good route to go?
I don't know, because see, his expertise may not be in governmental kind of multi... Well, can you do some research on this? Well, I know there's plenty of companies I deal with them. You know, the Stonewall, you know, you hear them on the radio a lot of time now. When we first started, we had IT systems and they were the only show in town. And then all of a sudden, now everybody has a private vendor competing for business.
And he was that robber or whatever his name was that used to come. Because I remember, I mean, earlier today, I spoke to Lynn about a pad who said, oh, he was very good. But he said, if we ever go the route, padding our own vendor, it'll be way more expensive. Well, that was then because probably, like you said, he was the only show in town. But however we can move this forward, I'm glad you've spoken of this.
Thank you.
What do we think is, what are we going to do?
I don't know, we have the motion to reach out to Mr. Angie.
Maybe we should do that. Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'll amend the motion. Do we reach out to this gentleman primarily for his input? And tell him that we're also going to consider other firms, as the town council assistant referred to, we're trying to look for as much input as possible. And see how much experience he has with what Ken says with regards to government systems and what we may need.
Well, it's up to you to amend it.
Okay.
And then Lynn or Ken or whoever, Lynn probably making calls, can report back. December is still...
Yes.
What she found. We keep this item right here on agenda, somewhere.
Right.
Oh, you have it up to do.
Yes.
That will move it to...
The whole... Right.
We'll move this to unfinished business.
And I'll take the responsibility as the council member, because I brought this up, to stay on top of this, to continue to update the council from the perspective of where we are and where we're going. The only other thing that I would say before we have a vote is I don't know if there's any specifics that I've forgotten that the town clerk or the town treasurer would like to add.
Nobody's just, since I've been clerk, it's been an ongoing struggle, challenge, to get them to follow up and do some things that they, you know, say we need. So, it has been a struggle. But like you said, we pulled back because we didn't want to see the cost of IT double.
Right.
Yeah, when I heard the story about you, Frank, and your repeated quotes and your frustration, one staff member here in the building today said that they made a call to the IT person that's supposed to come because they needed some assistance. And the answer was, ask Carrie. The assessor. Which, by the way, she did, and Carrie was able to address it. But that's not the kind of, I mean, whatever.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, if you are, if we are going to end up paying per service call for something like a contract, well, there's a case where these people can really resolve if they have to, ask Carrie or ask each other. But if they can't, then that's when you call in the IT guy, right? I mean, isn't that...
We do that now.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. And then he probably doesn't show up right away. Well, anyway, never mind.
A lot of the thirty-nine cities and towns, I know some of them, as I've discussed with Lynn and Maria, have their own IT department because the municipality is big enough.
Sure.
And then if they can't handle the problem, they will contract it out per diem, depending on the service cost. But I mean, I don't want to specifically name any vendors, but I use West Greenwich as an example. I mean, and I confirmed this today with the town administrator, they're actually paying less than what we're paying.
That's what I was going to ask.
And they're actually paying less than what we're paying. And they're getting excellent service. And they go out and they purchase their own hot water.
Which we tried, they can do.
Right.
They'll do.
Right.
They haven't done it. They've all done that.
Right.
I don't know, that's not what it said.
Exactly.
So, that's good, but I wanted to ask you if you found out about cost.
Yes, I did.
Yes, we get bigger and our needs are more. It probably would be a good idea to have. And that way, we're confident.
Exactly.
Even as we were supposed to be.
Yeah, because other departments probably be some assistance too, kind of time. So, let's go.
I mean, we all know in this day and age, once you get hardware, it's outdated in a year. So, we need a vendor that's not going to be proactive, not reactive with regards to our needs. And that hasn't been...
All right, may I call a question, Mr. President?
Sure. I'll call it the vote to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Thanks.
Next, item H, request of Kayvon Shakori to comment concerning the event over Liberty Weekend 2017 at 1541 Ten Road Road. We had received a communication in October, number forty-three, from Mr. Shakori asking for a comment for us this month. And it's in refu, of a previous communication we had, number twenty-five. So, we've spoken with Jim, felt it would be in the best interest to let Kayvon come before us, speak. And if we have questions, we can ask. Shakori, are you available?
Yes. I'd like to address many of the concerns my neighbors have voiced at previous meetings I was unable to attend.
Excuse me, can you come forward? I have a problem here. I've been artillery long time.
All right.
Then I worked on a flight line.
Who else had to come forward in front of the camera ever?
All right, sure.
If you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Kayvon Shakori, meeting 1541 Ten Road Road. Thank you. I would like to address many of my concerns my neighbors have voiced at previous meetings I was unable to attend. I would like to apologize for my absence from the hearing for my event permit and for the meeting last month as I had prior engagements planned months prior to find out my neighbors were making elaborate and inflated accusations about my person and the activities I enjoy as a free citizen of the United States of America. I ask for my gathering to be addressed at this meeting rather than the previous so I can be present, have an opportunity to address the multiple false accusations. Jody and Holly did not end up coming tonight, knowing that I was going to be here. There was a gathering of friends and family on my property to celebrate a national holiday, Labor Day. Many of my friends and family are musicians and we enjoy playing our instruments for each other. We had a gathering on September 2nd to celebrate Labor Day, as did the majority of the state and the country. This Labor Day party was titled "Mechatropolis", and I've listened to the meetings on video that I could not be at in person. And I would like to clarify that I name my parties for the same reason you name your pets, children, books, and movies, to easily differentiate from something when you're talking about. This is not illegal, it's just for fun. And this isn't proof or damning of anything. My Labor Day party was shared with my friends and family via a private group where I could control who received invitations, who could see the information. This was much different than the open twenty-one-plus gathering I had for my graduation on Fourth of July weekend previously, entitled Fire Fest. If you notice, nobody is able to bring up a Facebook page for this party as they could for Fire Fest because I've listened to the concerns the town had of Fire Fest and I will no longer have any public parties at my house. I do have a right to have private gatherings as the rest of the country does to celebrate anything I so choose, especially a national holiday. This was a private gathering of less than one-fifty attendees of a Fire Fest. There was no charge or donation associated with the party and I used my personal funds to finance the party with my friends. All of the musicians I am friends with had practice sets and showed up just to jam out and have a good time with each other. Nobody was paid to do anything. There were no performers, no fire spinning, no LED staff spinning, no giant block obstacle course. There were lawn games where people played and the people played instruments for each other. Nobody spent any money to be there. Everyone was twenty-one plus and brought their own alcohol if they chose to consume any. Everyone could camp out and stay the night. Nobody had to drive anywhere, it's a safe environment. The signs for my property that are mentioned in my neighbor's letter were put up for my sister's graduation party the week prior as we had guests and family from out of state who were not familiar with the location of my house. The signs are to prevent anyone from turning around on 165 and were put there as a precaution. Having my property labeled in a clear manner is not illegal or proof of any money-making scheme. In previous meetings, the same neighbors complained about the signs or complaining that the road's unsafe and dark. I put lights in my house number to make sure guests slow down, turn safely into my driveway. I find it asinine that I made it just for safety and then this is used against me. There's clearly no making these particular neighbors happy. Mary Rossi has stated she appreciates the same signs that Holly Force here complains, I'm sorry, Holly Otten, I should change her name, complains about, as it prevents turnarounds, making the road safer. Also, the use of signs to communicate information has been a practice for thousands of years. So, using signs at any event or party, gathering, anything, to make sure that my guests are, know the rules of my property or what is going on, so it's safe and people are smart and educated of what to expect from me and what's happening around them, I think that's a smart and safe practice. And in a certain way, I'm doing something illegal because I have names and numbers on the signs, not just. The size of one's gathering is limited to their capacity. There were no cars on the street or even parked down my driveway. Everyone was contained in my backyard, a well-lit area. Jody Willis, my neighbor directly across the street, claims my Labor Day event was all night long. I didn't have an event, I had a gathering. And it was not all night long. He said he could hear the boom, 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 all night long. The night of September 2nd, 2017, it began to rain at 9:30 PM and was downpouring by 10:00 PM. He also addressed the type of music that was being played, claiming it was hardcore and pretty bad stuff. My other neighbor, Holly Otten, has also made multiple comments attacking the type of music that my friends and I enjoy as free Americans. My right to personal expression, as well as the right for every one of my friends and family who enjoy rock and heavy metal music, is being attacked. Just because I enjoy heavier music than my neighbors does not make me a criminal or proof of any illegal activities. I personally do not enjoy country or rap music, but I've never complained somebody else is enjoying it or listening to it because it's their right as an individual citizen of this country. As musicians, we have decibel meters and we use these during the Labor Day gathering to make sure we stay within Chapter 22, Section 33 of the Town Ordinance for Sound. We use these meters to keep track of the sound produced in my backyard. At the end of the backyard, the sound produced did not exceed the fifty-five decibels at any period of time. As required by the ordinance, we made sure the sound produced was under fifty decibels after 7:00 PM. By 9:30, the sound gear was back in the people's cars and it began to rain and we finished loading. By 10:00 PM, it was downpouring and we were all moved under a tent to hang out. It was not an all-night gathering as Holly and Jody have claimed. They couldn't be hearing the boom, boom, boom of the music when it's downpouring and there's no music being played. My neighbor Mary Rossi submitted a letter refuting the false accusations of Holly and Jody about the music. They claim the music played throughout the night and that it was bothersome. Mrs. Rossi is one of the closest houses to mine and she states in her letter the music was barely audible during the day and there was no noise heard by 10:00 PM that night. If it was barely audible to the closest house to mine, then how can Jody, who lives across 165, hear anything? Jody was not aware of my Labor Day gathering, had happened until he receives Holly, Holly is the legally placed circular. Jody stated the cars going in and out of the driveway kept him awake all night and then further commented it didn't really bother him. Cars were going in and out all night long, cars were not going in and out all night long. We have surveillance cameras to disprove this accusation and if he did not, if he could not provide any timeframe for the sound or the cars he claims were driving up and down the driveway except for the descriptor, all night long, this is not evidence. This is him fabricating lies to try and have me fined as he's angry that my father has leaned against his house and he refuses to pay my father thousands of dollars for excavation work my father performed on Jody's property. Mrs. Rossi also refutes the traffic claim by Holly and Jody in her letter to the town council. Please keep in mind, this is a neighbor Holly Otten did not, did intentionally avoid contacting in her efforts to rally crusaders against me and her personal, or in her personal vendetta against me and Jody's financial vendetta against me. As Mrs. Rossi pointed out, the response Holly Otten, the response that Holly Otten slammed this letter and it generate is not an accurate, accurate representation of all of my buddy neighbors. In this country, we are innocent until proven guilty. We do not have, I do not have to provide proof of my innocence. Jody has made false accusations and offered no firsthand proof of his allegations. He also claimed to reach out to social media to make money and yet there is no proof to corroborate his accusations. Anything found on the internet and social media has not been proven to be legitimate or proven to contain proof of anything illegal. There is no law stating when we exit, we can exit or enter our property and any attempt to make a law will violate my constitutional rights of privacy. I've worked nights for years and lights have never been a problem for him prior to this. Jody has called for me to be fined, but he should check his own affairs and follow laws himself before speaking out to others to be fined. Perhaps the town should investigate his property and see if there are any violations that go much further and much deeper than a group of law-abiding citizens gathering to celebrate a national holiday. Jody made a comment about not calling the police. He did not call the police because he did not know there was a gathering until Holly gave him a letter with false accusations over a week later. The police have been called on me by my neighbors, have shown up and seen my gathering, told me I was doing everything legal, especially by having TIP certified people checking IDs at my gate to make sure all of my invited guests are of legal drinking age and are on my guest list. I am not selling liquor or any items on my property. It is legal to consume alcohol and I find it asinine that Holly has tried to make it seem damning that adults are safely consuming adult beverages in the safety and privacy of my property, especially when I provide space for them to set up tents and safely spend the night. The Rhode Island Social Host Law is specific in dividing the word permit. In Section 3-8-11.1, in regards to giving permission to underage persons to consume alcohol, this state, this state's permit means to give permission for or approval of the possession or consumption of an alcoholic beverage by any form of conduct that would cause a reasonable person to believe permission or approval has been given. I do not allow underage people into my gatherings, I have no underage friends. By having TIP certified people checking IDs at the gates to confirm that people coming in on my property are my invited guests and they are of age is a way for me to ensure that I'm following the law. By checking IDs and not allowing entry to anyone underage, I am not approving of, not permitting, not giving permission to, and I'm not creating an environment for any person to think they have permission to consume alcohol legally on my property. It is ludicrous that Holly and Jody are attempting to use my proactive and legal means of regulating my gatherings, something that the state police are aware of and want me to do to try to make me look guilty. Having somebody to regulate who's coming in and out of my property when the town doesn't want me to have public people, random people coming to my house, I think that's a smart thing to do, but she's trying to use that against me. I've gone to the state police barracks and they did not receive a single complaint from anyone during my Labor Day gathering. Jody Willis and Holly Otten have both made claims I am charging and making money for my gatherings. This is not the case. Previously, prior to any contact from the town council, there was suggested donation for attending the party that had bands playing so we could compensate the band's gas money and so we could provide guests with anything they needed and not have to pay for everything. This included adequate porta-potties and water. The donation was never mandatory, I did not make money from any grad, from my graduation party. This is abs, there is absolutely no proof that I collected money for my Labor Day gathering and there cannot be proof that I did not collect money. I was not told I could not receive donations from my parties, but I have not asked for any money, received any money, have not gift, been gifted any money or received any financial compensation for my Labor Day gathering. I saved my personal money and spent it on extra fire extinguishers and elaborate first aid kit, water, tents, and lighting so my friends could enjoy property with me, my property with me on a beautiful holiday weekend. One of the items I have with me is I have CPR and first aid certified as well. So I also know how to use all the first aid equipment that I purchased. My friends that attended the party have the ability to run the sound gear of lighting and instruments. Many of my friends are in bands together and they all showed up and played their instruments for fun. Nobody was paid anything. I would like to hand everybody, I'm going to reference this, next. If you could please flip to the next page. I called it, I didn't count it.
Sorry, I delayed the video, one, there was one less council member.
I'd like to bring to the, um, the second page I had mentioned, two pictures of my driveway. Holly Otten claims the lights bother her from my driveway. There are two pictures of my driveway facing exactly where her house is in both pictures. She does not have enough light, a line of sight to watch my gate as she claims, even though she had her husband cut the branches on the left photo on the second one. I'm going to go into that again in a second. On the first page, I would like to bring attention to the town council post on Facebook from Holly Otten, on her Facebook page, "Love." The excerpt I am going to read from is from the bottom square. The other two images are a reference for where the image was found and to prove this text is part of, part, part of Holly Otten's post. The post can be found at the link, www.facebook.com/madeforlove222/post/128471812155102. This post is titled "Transparency" by Holly Otten. In this post, Holly talks about speaking to God and God talking back to her. She claims God spoke to her at one point through a T-shirt on a stranger at a store, telling her she needed to be more transparent. Later on this post, Holly admitted something rather disturbing about herself and it reads...
Pardon me, sir, but Mr. President, I don't know.
This is relevant.
I don't, I don't know how this is relevant.
This is relevant right now. I'm about to make a quote. I'm about to, she used Facebook, she brought up Facebook posts for me, I'm about to read it right now.
Mr. Shakori, if you want, you want to make this part of the record? We can make this a part of the record this time instead of continuing.
Sir, I, I, I'm, I'm being harassed by my neighbors. I'm here, I'm going to finish, I am going to finish.
Mr. Shakori, please. Can you tell me the definition of the public entertainment?
I'm going to finish and then I will finish everything I have and then I would want to hear from you. You just interrupted me and everybody else has always gotten to speak.
Hang on, Mr. Shakori, everybody's trying to be as courteous as they can here.
I'm...
And I understand that you're upset and that's fine and, and you're, you're giving a nice, uh, nice presentation.
I just got, I got interrupted during that point, making a point.
It's, it's the town council's meeting and you asked to be here.
I asked for the, the comment.
They've given you the opportunity. Now, please play by their rules in terms of being civil and in terms of being, you know, in terms of...
I can be interrupted, but you can't interrupt it.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct, because it's our meeting, okay? And I, I don't mean that to sound autocratic, but that's the way the town council runs. It's a business place. They, it's their business meeting, they run the meeting.
You just asked me to come and, uh, make the address.
No, we grant, we granted your request to address the council.
I wanted, love, last month's conversation to happen now.
I'm saying you're upset, so please, wrap it down a little bit. When it gets to discussing other people and their personalities, we never got into that, we don't allow it to happen.
She made a personal attack on me and what I'm about to say makes sense. This is about her intentionally putting facade up to get what she wants.
Did you or did you not invite members of the public to attend? Any members of the public, were they invited to attend?
My friends and family were invited. Nobody was invited that I do not know.
Only friends and family, no other public?
Yes, only people I know.
Because for public entertainment, since you kept referencing charge, um, the actual ordinance states that it can be free. It does not, invited, members of the public are invited or admitted for a charge or free of charge. Um, I would like to also open this up to the council to see if they have any questions for Mr. Shakori regarding the July event.
I know that's, every video of ours must be being...
Mr. Shakori, if you, if you, actually if you want to make your entire presentation a part of the record, you can.
I, I, I'm not going to submit, this, this document has my personal notes and handwritten on it. I would like to please finish my point.
If the, so, no further question, I think at this time we're all set.
All right, thank you. All right, this post is titled "Trans..."
No, no, I'm saying we're all set, thank you, you may have a seat.
All right, may I please just finish this?
I, I think we've heard enough at this time, Mr. Shakori.
Then I won't read it. Can I at least point out what I would like you to read, the one paragraph on that paper I just...
Mr. Shakori, like I said, please have a seat. Thank you. I'd like to move on to number 10, "Animal Business," Historic Preservation, Historic Statistics, Ken. Yep, all right. Ken, we're going to keep it with you. Impact Fee Study.
Uh, so, how much more?
Okay, so still, we're working on it, okay. 10C, Introduction, Consideration, and Possible Action in Ordinance Regulating Certain Secondary Agro-Cultural Uses and Activities. Continue that again for now, continue that for another one. Number 11A, Public Works Department, ready?
Sure, I know you were busy.
Something happened?
Very busy. I had asked the phone how things were going out there. So, can you tell us any major things that happened in the town that maybe I'm not aware of or during the storm?
We had numerous trees down across multiple town roads. Everything was open to traffic the following morning, by the following day, I should say. It started for us about 10:00 PM on Sunday night for the windstorm. By Monday afternoon, all but the turnpike had been cleared for traffic. Nobody was trapped, like, if East Shore Drive, for example, a tree came down about five houses in from the entrance and blocked the whole road. So that meant about 50 homes were trapped. That's a one, one-way in, one-way out on East Shore Drive. So we went up, we moved that tree immediately at about 2:00 in the morning, Monday morning. And in, in order to do that, we actually had to clear trees on Route 102 because the DOT couldn't get out a machine, according to the request of the state police. So we cleared 102 on the way up to East Shore Drive and then worked our way back down through Mail Road and Trips Corner, there were some more trees across that road. So by the, by the end of Monday, all but the turnpike was clear and then Tuesday morning, we cleared the turnpike. And we just, at that point, started chipping the brush and on today, we finished picking up the wood that the residents didn't take. So as of today, other than a pile I saw dumped out on, on Tenrod Road from a resident that we'll clear up tomorrow, weather permitting, we are 100% recovered on a public works standpoint from the storm.
I know there was a lot of tricky trees out there.
Well, we, we, we made sure that Tuesday night was clear, all roads full with in town life, so there wouldn't be an impact.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you, may I ask, did you make feeling good use of the bucket truck?
Oh, yeah, we were two and a half days steady, just clearing, um, hanging, especially hanging debris that was up high, you might not even noticed as you were driving by.
And I only ask you because I can remember, you know, some criticism of that even being under consideration for your department to have one, so...
Oh, it pays dividends every time we touch it.
Yeah, as far as the transfer station, I spent some time there on Sunday. Let's try to look for the English thing. The operation is run smooth down there?
Yeah, the only, the only thing we've had come up recently, and Lynn made a posting up for us, um, we put up, was that individuals are disposing of needles, sharps. And Ahwala has, has noticed this on several occasions, brought it to our attention. You know, he sees the box, he has to open the box and close the box and... So he noticed it, he brought it to my attention, we made a notice, posted the notice at the facility. And he said it had, he, he noticed it one more time, but he said this, this last week he hasn't seen it. And we did experience a little heavy weight this week due to most likely last week's power outage and heavy weight for probably food debris.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of people dump it.
So we had a little extra weight this week, but nothing that wasn't handled.
All right, continue on with the animal shelter.
Animal shelter, I was here Sunday, with somebody writing up a paper to adopt that little brown dog.
Yes.
That little terrier type.
Yeah.
And again, I like to, I appreciate the volunteers that go there when I go there. We have, you know, a mom was there with a child, they were washing the dishes. Appreciate all they've done and...
Yeah, we have a volunteer help, it makes a big difference.
It's a big difference, so, it's looking clean, everyone's...
Yeah, the operation is running smoothly at the moment.
Before you move on, off, off to animal shelter, uh, again, I'm sorry I wasn't here last month, but the, the study committee that was set up, was that your suggestion, the study commission?
No.
Were you appointed to that, Frank? And, and what, what, can you just tell me, moving forward, what you, is it about efficiency? What, what was your, what's your goal? If you could just tell me what you're going to be working on. Breathing into the operation or...
To, to take Councilman Morris's words, I think that it's just an opportunity so to make sure that they streamline. My main concern was is that, well, last month but the month before, we had debt bills that approached $2,000 for that one month and we asked Director Mackcheck about that and he'd explained to us that that was because it was the time of the year and the spade is dwindling of, of certain pets. So, and we'd never see that type of expense again. Well, it just so happened that the next month, which was last month, the expenses were almost the same, it was almost $2,000 again. And this month is $810. So, I think there's a lot of questions that are unanswered from the perspective of the council with regards to, you know, how many, uh, have we gotten to a point where we've changed, that we're not a shelter anymore because a lot of the animals that are there are residents? So have we become a town? Well, if that's the case, maybe that's something that we need to streamline, consider maybe we have, how do we adopt those animals out? Instead of the taxpayer being on the hook or constantly taking care of these animals and their constant medical problems, okay? Steve can't be there all the time, he has plenty of departments to follow. So I just thought this would be another way to assist Steve and to assist the, uh, the town with looking at it with another set of eyes to see if there's some way that we could maybe streamline the efficiencies, as Councilman Morris has said, and look at the expenses from the standpoint, because we have had problems, perennial problems over the last couple of years with the amount of money that we provide for the animal shelter and line item budget, they go over that and spend even more. So they seem to be in the red every time we come up to a budget session. And I think that's a problem and I think we need to address that and I think we need to stay within our means of what our expenses are with regards to that shelter. And I, and I don't think that should mean that we should take animals and euthanize them, but that doesn't mean that we can't possibly see if we can find another location and can place them in so they can get adopted or possibly someone at the care of another individual in another community that maybe can afford to, to, to its expenses other than having to worry about them being a constant resident in the animal shelter in our town, that's all. So I just thought that it would be a good idea to, to look at the entire operation. And I, I mean, if you recall, Cal, and I remember this, years ago, I was one of the volunteers that helped work on the animal shelter, to get it up and running, okay? And I remember when President, when Kenny Furnstrom was the president of the council and the initial, the, the, the initial mission accomplishment, mission statement was that it was going to be run on a volunteer basis with donations. Well, if you look at the line item and the budget, that certainly isn't the case now the way it was initially intended to be 10 years ago when we built that shelter.
Okay, interesting you used the word volunteer, only because I know some people have said it ought to be volunteers that can't, can't...
I understand that you...
For state mandate, we have to provide, you can't provide, but, but I wasn't...
The only thing that state mandates is that we have an animal control officer.
I understand that we need to have an ACO, I understand that.
That's it.
But there's a lot of other issues as well. I mean, I mentioned how two meetings ago, I was going to mention I brought my tablet to refer to information, all right? If you go on the DEM State Veterinarians website, we are deficient and we're not the only municipality, don't get me wrong. But we're, but we're one of the municipalities that's deficient in giving the mandated reports of the state vet. If you look on the exited, there's all zero. If you look on the exit, there's all zeros. So, I, I think there's a number of different concerns that I think the study committee could probably address, that we don't have the time, and the liaison doesn't have the time to look into, and I don't think the director does either, because of his work load.
That's all right, no, I, I, thank you, I don't question that efficiency or any of the other things, so, that's fine, thank you.
And we had the committee for the transfer station, we had a lot of good ideas and a lot of good research, and well, and well, so, hopefully we can implement that for the animal shelter, and I think we got the right people that can, that can do that.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Tax Collector's Office Liaison Report?
Yes. Let's see here. So, the report from Ms. Robitaille, the monthly collections report, total collections for the month of October were 397,000, $681.79, and our money's been reported to the treasurer. She also has a comment that says there are still remittances that are being submitted for the overpayments from the motor vehicle phase-out, but not on as large of a scale as the August-September report. There's also, there's also a couple of, I didn't know whether you were, within this report, you wanted to specifically speak to the remittances and the abatements as well, if you'd like me to, or?
No.
I know it's a separate line item, I just didn't know if you wanted me to speak to it before we made the motion report.
Could we have a discussion on it, or, where you can do that now, or you can do it then?
Okay, it's up to you.
We can do it then, where it's up to you.
Okay, we shall do it then.
Perfect.
So that's the report for the Tax Collector.
Would you like to give us the report for the Exeter West Greenwich School District?
Certainly. Unfortunately, the school committee member, I believe just left, Diane Allen, I didn't know she had anything to add. What I did do this month, as I did just receive the recent blog that the superintendent puts out, Superintendent Mironakis, and I forwarded to all of you during this meeting, it's pretty comprehensive, it does touch on some personnel issues as well as, as well as an issue of a power outage and how a generator was, came into play, it was very useful in one of the schools. So if you all check your email, we should have that report. Beyond that, I don't really have a lot else to report, other than, we should keep an eye on the timeline that I mentioned to all of you in the last council meeting with regards to the budget.
I saw pass through information a while back that our enrollment, our student population as of October 1st, what needs to be calculated, was under 50%, while West Greenwich is in excess of 50%, which I think puts us in a better place than it might.
Yes.
Better than if it were, we were.
Correct. Yeah, I mentioned that briefly in the last, in the last council meeting report, but yes, you're correct, Cal, we did get an actual document, that was in everybody's packet that speaks to the specifics.
I was just glad to see that.
Yes.
46.
I agree, I agree, yes.
Cal, Tax Assessor's Office Liaison Report?
Yeah, just, you all received Carrie's report, and I hope you spent a little time with it, because I spent time with her, and this issue of unknown properties, remember, came up first in 2002, although there have been suggestions prior to that that I want to remember, but specific pieces have been identified, and Carrie, if you notice, has provided us tonight with closing out two major pieces, some pieces, major pieces of property, that she did her own research to resolve, and this is certainly to her credit. So you're gonna see that when we, when we address the tax assessors' abatements, but of the list, you remember this long list that you see, 14 of these are all piece of property that was transferred to the State of Rhode Island, for which they are twice taxed exempt, but, so owner unknown continued to appear, and we have to abate that money because it's not gonna be paid, and it wasn't, it really wasn't owed, and this was a transfer of property that wasn't properly picked up in the assessor's office from years ago. And the second one was a parcel that was contiguous and was already burgaged to create a larger lot, but that went into the pair of the records, so where it says owner unknown, it actually is being taxed by the party that owns the property next door, if that makes any sense, but Carrie's done some due diligence, and to her credit, and now she's gonna be working with the title examiner to resolve the last few, I think there are one, two, three, four, five, that she's gonna try to work on.
Must've been a lot of research.
It is, but to her credit, and this also assists with the outstanding collections, because they can be collected, so we're gonna fix that. So to her credit, that's the important thing, and I just want this comment, these comments to be made as part of the record, so the record shows that this is a work in progress, and that our assessor is moving forward to resolve these. And you're, you know, the specifics are right here in your report, if you remember seeing when she passed it on to you. And I'll speak to Job Corps.
Thank you.
Just quickly, from mid-September, I haven't had any updates since then, unfortunately, and I say unfortunately, but it's okay, the rank, which has always been in the top 10, temporarily, and I'm sure it's only gonna be temporary, slipped down to 18, out of 100 and whatever, 25, 125 centers. But, but the important thing, jobs placement of kids that leave, that graduate from Job Corps, they're ranked number one in the country for their placement record of helping these people find lucrative, well, appropriate employment. They have top-ranked programs in carpentry, culinary arts, and the CNA program, and they are updating credentials in health occupation and business management programs. ProStar, which is a national culinary competition, is gonna be held here in Rhode Island, it's a national competition in 2018, and they mentioned also that students participate in blood drives and the support of the Ronald McDonald House, and the North Kingstown Food Land Bank, the Gloria Gemma fundraising event that would occur, so the kids are out there doing some community stuff, and they're always looking for other opportunities to assist. I think our own food bank, because it's operated on a more limited basis than North Kingstown, probably isn't something that they can be involved in, but that's not to say, I think Christine has already been approached, but when I see her, I will ask her if there's anything which could use any assistance. And as to the other report, I'm very sorry to say, we have not met, I've spoken with the director, he said that he continues to reach out to other towns, they don't respond, and this is gonna be my suggestion tonight, by the way, we have not paid dues for this year, and I'm gonna suggest that I work with Lynn to compose a letter on the council's behalf indicating a disappointment that the planning council is not, is not.
Reprimanded.
Is not meaning, and I'd like to have, I've worked with Lynn to craft that letter, but I'd like it to go out under President's signature, if you'd be kind enough if the council agrees. It used to provide an informative interplay, interaction amongst people in different towns and sharing concerns, and I think there are plenty to be shared now with soul issues and any number of others, but in any case, we haven't met. So, I'd just like to, on the council's behalf, you know, write a letter and say we're disappointed that the council appears not to be functioning, I wish that it would, and we're not gonna be paying any dues for each of those, but it's not gonna happen.
Lockington already did those.
They dropped out a couple of years ago, but we were still functioning, people were still coming, we met monthly, so, that's my.
Chair, second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Kevin, you won't mind, sir, once we put something together, thank you.
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I have a concern I'd like to bring up again, I've brought this up before, and Job Corps does a lot of good stuff, and one thing they don't do is they don't pay attention to people who see, who are out there walking on Route 2.
Still in issue.
Not realizing that Route 2 is a very fast highway, and they're not, they wear a lot of dark clothing, and I came upon a couple of people the other night, and I saw them the last minute.
Wow.
And I wish they would address that, and I said before, I know, when you're in the military, you're out on the flight line at night, you have a reflective belt on, and you're issued a reflective belt, so people can see you and identify you, somebody walking. But I think they come, they come across to the exit of the mall, and they walk across the street, I don't think they realize how fast Route 2 is.
Because the bus stop is there, is that correct?
No.
Oh, to the Stewart.
When I was coming in tonight, there was two of them in dark clothes from head to toe.
So, for us that live on Route 2 in that area, we have to deal with that, and it's, we have to be very careful of that, I wanted to bring that.
Well, let's send a note, you mentioned it before, and I did mention it too, but let's, let's put it in a letter for him, and send it to the center director, who are concerned about safety and that, we should be.
I know we've done it before, we were sent last time.
I don't, did we send a letter before? I couldn't remember if we had. Please?
Send a reminder.
Oh, I think we should reiterate, it's come up, it's here before the council, and you see it, I know, so.
Frank?
It's good.
I agree with Cal, and in the segue that Dan said is absolutely right, there's an actual place where people that wanna pick up the bus can go if they're taking the bus going north. But when that, I was behind the bus, or Ripta bus, when it was going south on Route 2, and it pulls over onto the lawn, which is, looks to be veteran cemetery property, they let people off, and if they're wearing dark clothing, and it's night, and that road is not well-lighted, especially on that side of the road, you cannot see anybody, and you don't know if they're gonna go down the lawn toward Job Corps, they're gonna go across the street to the exit of the mall, it's not well-lit, there's not a place where the bus can actually drop off people when they're going south, like, as they can when they're going north, that's a problem. You know, I can see where sooner or later, someone's gonna get hurt.
So, unfortunate's gonna hit somebody.
Do you wanna send a second letter to them?
I think we should.
Yeah?
Reiterate, we'll say, reiterate the concerns previously expressed that surfaced again at this council meeting with.
And I think that should be CC'd to the director of Job Corps, to let him know that this, this is a safety concern with regards to the students.
No, that's.
Yeah?
No, that's where we'll send it, to the director.
Oh, okay.
And you meant CC someone else's.
Maybe we should CC Ripta, too.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing that the bus driver can do about it, but aren't they responsible for erecting those, the places that the buses, the buses pick up the individuals, the riders? So, I mean, I don't know, maybe they're prevented from putting a one on southbound Route 2, because that's state land, which is the veteran cemetery, but I think Ray's right, and so is Cal, and so is Dan, with regards to the issue.
Chair, motion, just in the letter?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, Carrie's? Dan, Public Safety?
Let's see, I have a rather lengthy draft, Stefan, and.
Thank you, Cal.
I think his first comment was, it was a storm, a bad one. I'll touch on some of the stuff that others haven't touched on yet. Well, there was an article yesterday, Sunday paper, which kind of spelled out exactly what happened, they may have over four inches of rain at Green Airport from the storm event, and I'll just hit some highlights here, Stefan, because he's gonna have a complete report next Monday, he's in Louisiana today. He had, all Public Works Emergency Services were activated and responding to incidents, this is over great Sunday and Monday, utility disruption was at 100% in Exeter, decision came to school, been made by 3:00 AM, although they still had powers of on-site emergency generators, the immediate concern is keeping everyone off the road due to debris and damage. Monday afternoon, all emergency services and public works were in action, it's very important to point out that we treat our first response community in Exeter as number one, he's got the Exeter Constables, number two, Exeter Fire Department, number one, number three is Exeter Fire Department, number two, number four is Exeter Fire District EMS, five is Exeter Emergency Communications, and six is Exeter Department of Public Works. And the one thing this time, Lynn had power the whole time, so, like I said, this is just a draft, he's telling me, he's out of town, he was in Cleveland on Saturday, and he was in Louisiana today, he will have a more formal report available for next month's meeting, so. All along with the storm. And next up, Exeter Little Way and Preservation Trust Committee, the meeting was canceled because we didn't have any power while we were at school Monday night, so, the next meeting is the 8th, which is Wednesday, I believe, and they just posted it today, is that, tomorrow again? I didn't read all, is agenda, did you send me any of that?
Yes.
Is that while we're on Wednesday? Okay, that's all I have.
Well, next, the Extra Public Library Liaison Report, I also have a rather lengthy email from the director of the library, she didn't have internet access, but she did have a phone, so she was able to put out a lot of information.
The one thing Stefan forgot here, he didn't put anything in there, because we were getting a lot of information through Amy.
And that's what she was doing, she was pushing it out to the town's webpage, to the library's email list, she reached quite a few people in town, and it kind of helped turn Stefan, realize they can kind of streamline some things with information sharing. In other news for the library, Amy Fontaine is offering their first sensory story time on Saturday, November 18th, it's a story time for all children, but it's specially designed to benefit children with more specific needs, she did a lot of research on the program, she's of the parents, professionals, representative from the Autism Project, who'll be at the library for the next three Tuesday mornings, to provide resources to parents and caregivers who may have questions. Also, Amy and Amy are representative of the library at the Volunteer Recognition Night for Perspectives Corporation, they've had a lot of adult volunteers with intellectual disabilities work at the library, so they get recognized for helping out that community. Also, the library received a copy of the impact study from DOT regarding the tolls being placed at 95. The study is online, but it'll be publicized as a hard copy, it will be available at the library, it's got a lot of information that they'll be bringing to residents in town. And lastly, on the town website, there's a link where residents can input their email address, and it'll go then to Lynn, and then Lynn can then send them our monthly agenda meetings, our special meeting agenda, so they can get that information in advance. And so far, it's had a lot of use so far.
Yeah, I've gotten quite a few requests to be added to the, you know, the list that receives the agendas, when I do receive a request, I send them an email in response saying that you're only receiving council agendas from me, if you're, you know, wanna keep up with planning and zoning, you'll have to go to the clerk base, or Secretary of State, or our website, and then I let them know if there's any questions or concerns, if you've got any agendas to contact me, but I do let them know that they will only be receiving council from me, so, planning and zoning, they have to seek elsewhere, if they're looking to, you know, the concern was that, the residents concerned over the last couple of meetings was that they don't get enough notifications of what's going on, so it doesn't start here sometimes, so I let them know that in the email, that they may want to check more.
Thank you. I have, I think, for the North Kingstown Preserve at Roland Greens Project Report, let's move on to Adam, Ken, Cal, Council Assistant Report.
Well, not much, other than I'll work with Lynn and to get the animal shelter study committee up and going as soon as possible, because of holidays.
Right. You hear that, Ken?
Yeah. All right, Jim's Listeners Report, it was a very busy month, a number of miscellaneous matters, the one, the big one was the.
The one, the big one was the, uh, the Arcadia Park case. That matter is now fully briefed, we put our reply brief in, um, last week or the week before, I believe. It was a lot longer than I expected because the state's brief was, uh, raised some rather novel issues that we weren't expecting to come up. So, we, I sent you all, I think, a, a copy of our reply brief. As you can see, it was, it was anything but brief. And the, uh, the hearing is, uh, is on the 20th, uh, of this month, before Judge Leach. So, he's an excellent judge, and I know we're gonna get a fair hearing out of him, and, uh, not, can't predict the outcome, but, uh, but I know we'll, we'll get a fair shake. So, all the briefs are in, all the work is done now, but for the argument, and I think that there's enough there for the judge to make a decision one way or the other. So, we'll, we'll know more relatively shortly. I think he, his timeframe for getting a decision in, uh, was somewhere before the holidays in December. So, I, I believe that's his, his part. Make sure they'll know something before the end of the year on that.
And that's still, that's still moving forward, certainly Richmond, right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, no, Richmond, uh, the Richmond Town Solicitor, Karen Ellsworth and I are working hand in glove really on this. And, uh, we're very consistent in our position, both of us, uh, agreed with each other in the case. And, uh, the main issue, as you all know, is whether the state needs to, to come before the local administrative boards in the first instance, just to make a record, so that people could come out and find out precisely what the town's interests are. And we won't know that until they present their, their, uh, full plans to the correct boards. And then after that, of course, there is an issue, uh, as to whether or not the state would be bound one way or the other. But that can only be done, that can only be assessed, we believe, fairly, after they've gone through the process. And then the judge, judge will determine whether or not the interests of the town outweigh the interests of the state, or vice versa. And, uh, what type of project would be placed in there, uh, at the end of the day. So, that's where we're at, it's a big procedural issue. Uh, everybody takes very seriously, including the state. And that's why, that's why it's ended up to be a much more involved piece of the league than I think everybody might have expected, including myself in the beginning. That's about it.
Yeah, before, sorry, before you move away from reports, just one thing I meant to mention. You should have received today an email from Carrie, because I'm going back to the assessor's office. And her, the assessor's clerk has come back to work. She will only be working at this point, one day a week through, through the end of the calendar year. And the email that you received indicates she's trying to work out some childcare issues. But Carrie assured me today that, um, Carrie can keep up with it because she's seen it from time to time. But, uh, it's, you know, going to be necessary for her to come back as appeals, you know, as, as things begin to filing. Not, you know, applications for tax relief begin to come in, and she needs the help. But right now, she says she's okay, and one day a week is gonna work. And of course, if you think about that, it's a bit of a savings, too, because all this isn't on pay, like, on the, on the clerk's part, so. I'm sorry, I just mentioned that.
Love and your twelve, Phil's appropriations abatements. Phil, she's before us.
I want to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to tax assessors' abatements?
I would move to approve them. It has a total of $30,843.62.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And then the tax collector's written some abatements, Frank, I want to get some commentary you want to share on this.
Yes, there was, uh, for the tax collector regarding remittance, there was, uh, 2017 motor vehicle remittance of $5,559.2. There was also a, uh, another remittance of $502.77, for a total of $6,061.79.
I move to approve those reabatements.
Sorry. Any further discussion on those?
They're not being paid, they're not being paid.
Uh, there were, there was one abatement for $543.80, which comprised of, uh, four different entries. One business and three individuals.
All right. I move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think Frank can second that. All right. Next, we move on to, are there any other administrative issues for the council?
I have, let's see, at the special meeting last month, last week, uh, the quarter of the reports from the planner, we've only received one that I know of from the last year. And then on our monthly agenda, we're supposed to be getting a monthly report? I don't think we received any. Can we, uh, start getting some reports from them, so we know what's going on in the planning department? Because we've had the marijuana thing that had to be passed immediately, that we find out, and then, then the solar thing that had to be passed immediately. And then when we get the solar thing, we have to take it into the overlay district, they kind of must know everything about it. We need to get some reports from them, and that's all I have to say in that department.
The motion is that we ask the planner to send us monthly reports and quarterly, um, town plan reports?
Yep.
I'll second the motion.
For discussion, and I, I think that it was a quarterly report, but I'm, I'm required by charter, but if you're, but I know it, it shows up here.
What were you on, what?
Well, I, 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 I'm sorry, but I disagree, because I do remember seeing something the last couple of months. I don't have it with me, but it wasn't very long, but I do keep them filed, but I don't have it with me, so I can't. You say we've had one in a year, um, I just, for the record, I don't think that's accurate. However, there's a motion on the floor, I'm not approving the motion.
Monthly and quarterly, monthly reports and quarterly reports?
Right, because it says monthly on our list of monthly reports.
Keep us updated.
You talking about also the comp plan?
And then exactly required.
It was supposed to be on quarterly, that's quarterly.
Exactly.
So, we then do have a motion?
It was, it was, the motion was quarterly.
Either monthly reports?
And quarterly comp plan reports.
Quarterly comp plan, okay. And then monthly reports, town, planning department, okay, got it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Communications, uh, looks like we discussed the eight for the influence interest. Number twenty, uh, five was pulled. I believe that was not discussed at this time. And twenty, twenty-five, thirty, forty-one, forty-two, I'd love for it to be discussed. Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five was me, and this was the, uh, request from Senator Morgan that, uh, actually passed through the Town of Charleston. It's filed, and I want you to look at that as clearly they're, uh, motion to intervene of the Town of Charleston regarding in, in energy, her, that license in ruralville.
Yeah.
And she passed it along, and I, I just, I would like us to consider whether or not we would join as well. I just, I'm only concerned about a siding board that, that doesn't allow for local input. So, I guess I'd like to pass this on to her.
So, I'll take a look at it, I, you know, the, the one thing is Charleston, as I understand, has a, has an issue because the water, wasn't one of the sources of water here reservation.
The Indian tribes negotiating to sell 4,000 gallons of water.
Just so you know, Cal, probably, probably, I'll look at it for sure, but probably the, uh, what, what, whether you have standing to enter as a matter of, of law is, is kind of an interesting question. Charleston probably does. What we might, I'm not sure, but the other option would be entering as a friend of the court, an amicus, essentially. And I don't recall which one that was.
No, well, I wish you'd look at it, and, and I'm only because, uh, yeah, and, and I, I glanced at it briefly, and I see that she's passing it on.
Right.
To us for our information. And when I saw water source, I'm thinking, we could already ground aquifers, I don't want to go to the end or anything that anybody else is taking. But probably not, so just look at it, and, and tell me, no, it's not anything that we, we can be involved in. Do you want me to pass this on to you?
Uh, I think I've got it, what's, what's on that?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five. I'm sure I have it in the package, Cal, so you don't have to...
Do you want any agenda next month?
No, 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 I'll only ask, you know...
Yeah, I, I briefly looked at it, and I'll look at it in more depth, but...
But you don't think it's some kind of...
Well, I, it's, it's, it's chugging along, and the people that have the most interest in it are in the litigation. So, if we join, it really might just be attorney's fees to add our name to it, you know, and not...
If it's, if it's what you just suggested about only the source there, because there are against it.
Well, that's how Charleston obviously has its, you know, has its standing to be heard. I'm not sure that we have that same power.
Probably, you know, it's okay, given that...
I'll look at it, I'll count.
You can, if you would, but it's harder for sure.
Next, we had number thirty, I had pulled that, that's the request of Emily Simonelli to use Chelsea Park, remember fifth of the thesis film. I just want to state that we had pulled this previously at our special meeting last Monday, um, and approved that. Forty-one, uh, was Hexagon Energy requesting disclosed possible lease for Solar Energy Project.
Yeah, and I just pulled it because I know that you, you spoke at length to someone locally, um, last month, but I think this is, you know, relating to chartered property, if they have something that they want to offer. So, I just brought it forward to see if there was any interest.
I hear about a half dozen of them a week.
No, I, I, I have, I have received them, I have received them personally as well, because this was directed toward the Town of Exeter. I wasn't sure if it might be in some place on Route Two that's appropriate. Of course, we already have one on Route Two. And just, just a curiosity, that's all.
And in town only versus being developed by residents in a limited area, I understand.
And that was my thought, but I know we have local, uh, businesses, too, but here it was, and I just didn't know if there was any interest, but it's okay. Just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, I was gonna pull that one, but that would be tough.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're coming from all over, as Dad says, he gets them, so...
People are interested. Yep. And then forty-two, Cal?
Well, this is, again, this is nothing to do with politics, uh, but for me, but Lieutenant Governor McKee says he's, he's, uh, making a statement here, and it seems that, look, we all know this was a bad situation last week. And I just, I wasn't sure if there was something that we might want to support him in his, in his pursuit. I didn't, I, it just says that you received from municipal leaders, small business owners, loud declare, communication was insufficient, inconsistent. I've read stuff on Facebook, I read something from someone on Boone Lake that said they constantly went to the website. We're told there were trucks, nobody sees, there's nothing there, there's nothing there. So, there was inaccurate, I mean, everybody was overwhelmed, I get that. But trying to, trying to pursue and ask for some accountability, I, I just, I, anyway, it says, "Next legislative session, I plan to submit a tailored version of House Bill 6190, piece of legislation not inadequate, requires all public utilities to provide proper and adequate customer service, taxpayer..." I mean, maybe it's nothing but out of here, but I just wondered if we should support such an endeavor to move forward on behalf of people that were in trouble around here and didn't have accurate information. I, I don't know how you guys, I don't know how you all made out, I was...
Frank, it's the last one, you're getting power back.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but, but...
Literally.
Okay. I, I, I don't think it could do any harm to, to write from the council to encourage him to pursue it.
Watching what Representative Aaron Riedenberg's proposing, he wants to propose 39 power companies in this state.
Well, I didn't, I'm not supporting that. I'm not supporting that, I was just supporting as an issue to bring about more responsibility, you know, more accountability.
Right.
That's all, and I, I was just thinking that, you know, a letter from the council encouraging him to pursue, uh, this legislation wouldn't be an idea. Whatever, whatever.
The problem with National Grid is since they bought out Marriott's Electric, they laid off hundreds of people. You can't even go in this building down here and see an engineer that goes to North Pearl Pass. So, basically, they're just blowing into money and getting rid of people. And they've done the same with the library.
And we hear that, we hear that, and it doesn't mean we shouldn't make some kind of response, or whatever, little, maybe, or whatever. I'm sorry, I don't mean to say little, but, but it's, it's ongoing on record to say we support this initiative.
Is it a motion?
Well, I will make a motion that we, that we communicate our support to Lieutenant Governor for his attempt to bring about greater...
And I think we should, I think we should include the legislative delegation in that letter as well. And I agree with you, Cal.
It just may not be any answer to anything.
The Lieutenant Governor seems to have his pulse, especially on utility of the electric utility. I mean, he's been one of the proponent, telling people that they should explore their options with regards to the sources and where they should get their energy from. But this isn't the first time this has happened. You know, 2012, after Hurricane Sandy, we had all types of hearings up at the State House with regards to that, and, and put National Grid on account, and...
Nothing was there?
And nothing, and nothing happened.
And as Dan says, the answer's that pull the people away, they lose their jobs, and that's not, that's not an adequate answer.
Right.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And what I think you can use language right in here, incorporate in the letter.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Next, we have executive session. I have something on their personality issues, like, um, relations, um...
Do B?
Yeah, we're probably going to do B, it's a C for regarding... We need to know this, C? Potential litigation, best viewed by...
Sure.
Okay, all right, so B, C, D, E, and G, anything under F?
I, I'd like to, I'd like to ask, please, I, I know this, I know you had sent through a request that we address that report. And I very much would like to have Steve and Maria attend the session because the report speaks to finance, issues of finance and issues of, just issues. So, I, I really would like to have them be part of our executive session.
With regards to E?
To E.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to E first.
Do you want to move that up on the agenda then?
Sure. It does, it does have a first.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, move, uh, number, um, number fifteen, executive session, item E, to the front of the executive session.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we motion to go into?
I'll make a motion that we add to executive session as well. Under items E, B, C, and D.
Second by many.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got it.
He's up there, he's got the little thing. He's like this, walking in, I'm going.
Thanks for trying.
He's a danger.
Fifty dollars on it. This is like the resident, this is like his party.